Uh-oh.
Thirty seconds.
Thank you.
To my rise for the pleasure of leaving.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Father God, thank you for this day, for the joys, for the lessons, and for the unseen blessings that you have given us. Lord, watch over our community and our citizens. Let your presence be our shield. God, help this elected body make the right decisions. It is your path that is bright and well marked with your word. Father God, it is through God the Son whom you sent to this world to teach us to love one another, who took our place on the cross for our sins, who sits at your side speaking on our behalf. It's in his glorious name we pray. Amen. All right, let's begin this meeting. As always, silence your phones.
Welcome, Bob.
Take any private conversations outside, and we ask you to keep the aisles and doorways clear for safety. And public comments will be at the end of each agenda item, and then there's a comment section for those things not on the agenda. Wait to be called and recognized before you approach the podium and speak. So to begin with, time limits is what I wanted to start before we started anything regarding the meeting itself. It seems like here lately, in recent weeks, we've had multiple meetings and work sessions. I believe that these have been necessary as we are a new commission and we have discovered areas and departments in need of updates and upgrades. Along with the budget process, we have a full plate. I would like to discuss establishing a protocol for setting a time limit on our meetings. Marathon meetings can be counterproductive to the democratic process, creating an urgency to just get through the agenda rather than give the subjects one's full attention. My suggestion is for meetings to start as already established at 5:30 and to run for two hours to 7:30, at which time we can review where we are at on the agenda and move anything pressing forward to be addressed and tabling other items for the next meeting. Also, anyone on the agenda that has traveled any distance to address the board should be moved to the top of the agenda following the approval of consent item. So possibly Madam Clerk has some issues or some discussion on the agenda itself that was at the bottom of the meeting, so I'll allow her to.
My biggest concern is when we, I try to set a timeframe, so I think I send out an email to you guys that says, you know, can you have your topics to me by Thursday? That allows me enough time to get everything ready and prepared by Friday, and if I can send out a preliminary to you Friday at noon, and then if you have any changes, then we can make those changes. In the past, I know the chairman, you have, the chairman has always been the person that kind of says, yep, let's move forward with this. And so if we could do that, that would help me because I'm revising it two and three times and sending it out two and three times. And so I would just like to help streamline that process if at all possible. So that's just my request from my office.
All right, thank you. Discussion. Commissioner Trent.
I don't have an issue with what you're proposing. I think, I guess one of my issues is when we come to the table, if we're going to talk about something, we should have all the information in front of us prior to putting it on the agenda. Because the last couple of times we've had these meetings, it just seems we talk and we talk about it. It becomes like a work session and like a merge between a commissioners' meeting and a work session, and we ultimately end up spending four hours, five hours, whatever, and then not making a decision. To me, this is a meeting where we make the decisions. If we need to explore something, let's do that in a work session. But if we bring something to the commissioners' meeting, I think all the facts should be there, and we all should be at least read in. Make sense?
I agree.
I think some of us, and what's happened in the two months that I've been here is it just seems like maybe one of us is read in. You know, and it could be me, it could be you, it could be Commissioner Milburn, but it seems like one of us is always read in, but the other two isn't read in. And I think part of that is because, you know, our conversations happen here at the table. So I think that's part of it. So I think if we are going to bring something to the agenda, I think somehow that needs to be communicated to either Madam Clerk or to the council and sent out to all of us so that at least we read in before the meeting.
Right. You done?
Yes, I'm done.
No, I'm sorry. Commissioner Milburn?
Pretty good at rolling with it. I can roll with whatever.
I agree with what you say. If we're going to put something on the agenda, we should have the supporting documentation with it so that the Madam Clerk can make the packet, which she does make, and even in an email form, then we all would have it and we all would be. So I believe in that, too. So I move that we adopt the following meeting procedures. Start time to begin at 5:30 unless the agenda lists multiple executive sessions. Well, hold it, I didn't add that part, so let me scratch that part out. Sorry. To begin at 5:30, to follow, otherwise meetings will run till 7:30 with the motion to adjourn entabling all unfinished business to the next meeting unless we decide to continue the meeting and items that are in the meeting. I also believe that adding to this motion that all items on the agenda should be, supporting documents should be provided to the clerk prior to the deadline date, which we're going to set at Thursday?
Yeah, it'd be Thursday.
Okay, is that okay with you guys? Thursday?
I would, go ahead, please. You first.
The problem is, is if something comes up and it don't get there Thursday, then it's just going to get added at the table with no notice for somebody if there's actually a deadline that can't be changed. So I think that if somebody has something, it should be added.
Yeah, well, and then we'll back up here to the discussion side of this. The reason why I think that we need to start having deadlines is like today, we got revisions to the agenda at 2:40, and I was, you know, I'm preparing for this tonight, so then I had to go back and add stuff and look up stuff. I mean, and not knowing what the persons that are adding it, you know, what they're bringing to the table. So I mean, I think we've got to have a point where we say, no.
So with that information, I think I would ask, I would ask that a preliminary agenda be shared with us Tuesday after our meeting Monday, so we know what has been tabled that's being added to it. So if that's shared to us Tuesday, we can amend and add and move and then give it back on Thursday. But if I give some documents and then it's put out of order or something, I'm still going to want to.
Searching.
Yes.
Okay. All right, so then back to them, I'll start the motion over again. You got?
Yeah.
Okay.
So to piggyback on what Commissioner Milburn says, she's advocating for the, an agenda on Tuesday. I say at the end of every meeting, we formulate the next week's agenda. Like we go through and it's like, okay, we will do this next week, next week, and it's already here. Madam Clerk is capturing it, so on Thursday, all she's going to do is just regurgitate what we said Monday night. So we leave the meeting knowing that we're going to talk about X, Y, and Z next Monday. Make sense? We don't know what's going to be added between Thursday and Monday, but we'll play that by ear. Because I'm pretty sure there's going to be instances in the future where something comes up, pops out of left field over the weekend where we're going to have to talk about it on Monday.
And I understand, you know, and I think we all understand.
That should be rare.
That would be an addition. That's the time when we should make the additions at the table. But otherwise, we should be knowing that, like you said there, we should know at the end of this meeting, at least what the preliminary agenda should look like for the next meeting. So then that would save her having to post something out on Tuesday as well.
It would just be posted to us.
Yeah, but if we already know it when we leave here tonight, then that just saves having to post it back out there anyway. So we should agree on it before we adjourn what the preliminary agenda looks like.
Because I get, I get a lot of phone calls from constituents like, should I attend? Should, what's going on? What's on the agenda? And honestly, we're in flux, and it has been, you know? So I think by close of business tonight, we should know 90% what we're going to talk about next week.
I have concerns about the two-hour limit just because we don't have work sessions scheduled. We utilize our meetings as work sessions, so these are, we work through it, we meet. If it was brought up the first time in new business, then usually it comes to old business the next week. So I have concerns about that because you might, just like at the beginning, start getting some really long tabled items or items that don't get off of there because we feel limited because we do not have work sessions.
And I think we should start scheduling.
So I don't think that we should limit them until we work out a work session schedule.
I don't know. I think that we have to, we, I mean, whether it's 7:30 or even 8 o'clock, two and a half hours, again, by 10 o'clock, we're rushing through the agenda just to get out of here. And, you know, so I don't know that that is productive when you're just like, oh, I'm so tired, I'm just ready to go.
Yeah, and I think in that case, what we did was we went ahead and tabled a lot of things.
Yeah, so I think this gives us a time when we, when we start discussing.
Make a cutoff and start to table things.
Yeah. And I mean, we could make it eight o'clock if you want to make it eight o'clock. That's two and a half hours in. And then, I mean, all it is, is at that point in time, we're going to have a discussion on whether we're going to continue on with the meeting and what items we need to bump up.
There's no reason we can't try, but if it doesn't work, we, I mean, we have to be able to, we have to be able to meet. We're here to work, so.
So, all right. I move that we adopt the following meeting procedures. To start the meetings, begin at 5:30, and to follow the agenda to 7:30, moving anybody that travels to the top of the agenda items, and otherwise following the agendas, setting the agendas before we adjourn for the next week's meeting. And otherwise, we will adjourn at 7:30. Do I have a second?
Second.
And all those in favor?
Ayes.
And all those opposed? All right, so next up on the agenda is approval of this agenda. So anybody got any changes to this agenda?
Yes. The salary resolution, I would ask that it's moved up underneath consent agenda as there was a motion, the second, all approved on 8/11 for this salary resolution.
Can you tell me the number? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, what?
Number 12.
Yeah.
Okay, salary resolution, gotcha.
Number 12, first item, move it up to where?
Because the consent agenda.
Above Mrs. Holdridge's budget question?
Yes. And we'll need a resolution number.
Where are we at on that resolution? 3125? Okay. All right. I move that we approve the agenda as corrected.
I second.
And all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, all those opposed? I'm learning, I'm figuring this out. So consent, or approval of the minutes, approval of the minutes for 8/2525 and 8/2925. Is there any corrections to be made to these minutes?
I sent a correction, I believe it was made. Okay. The correction was on the 9th history discussion, saying that the county usually maintained that, which that was, that was not from the commission or the county or the public works saying that, so I asked if that be quoted.
Okay.
Would you like me to re-put what was put in there?
Yes, please.
Mike Houston discussed the current conditions of a road that is in the city limits of Mapleton. He expressed they will have been, he expressed they have been maintained in the past by the county, but the last few years, they had trouble getting public works to fix them when requested.
And then you're wanting to say, oh, that's the corrected? Okay, all right.
Just making the statement that he said it.
That's right.
Okay, okay, thank you. And that's been corrected, so I move that we approve the minutes for 8/2525 and 8/2925 as corrected.
So.
And all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay, so next up is consent agenda. Approval of consent agenda for 9/525 accounts payable totaling $308,641.44. And approval of 9/525 payroll totaling $326,473.16.
And the resolution.
And resolution number 31-25, which is repealing resolution 14-25 and historical 12-25 salary resolutions for elected officials and appointed officials per KSA 25-825 and 19-101. Is there a second?
I'm sorry, I have a, I was to talk on that subject.
Okay.
If possible.
Yes.
And I haven't seen the resolution, so may I see it?
Thank you.
So this is reducing the county clerk's pay by 10 grand and the register of deeds by 5,000. Is that correct? And removing a COO, CIO. Is that all that's being done here?
I believe so.
On this resolution?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's being done in accordance to the motion from 8/11.
Okay. And what I wanted to discuss before any decisions were made is while I was on vacation, I noticed that there was some additional things that were put into the budget, one of them being a finance person for $25,000, of which I was doing for about $3,500. And then also an administrative assistant for $35,000 that we've never had in the past. The $35,000 that we were, that we were spending was to keep Jennifer in-house to assist my office and as well as to learn some of the treasurer's duties. That was just kind of a one-time thing. We had some extra funds that, some spots that weren't filled in, so I feel like these are additional positions that we're adding to our budget, which is about $60,000 to the budget item. And so there's also, with not having the resolution, I had asked for the resolution ahead of time for it to be under the consent. I really needed to know what it was so that I could prepare it. I was not given that information ahead of time. And my job duty as clerk is to be the secretary to the board. And it's very clear in the statutes, and I'll hand those out to you, but the Board of County Commissioners, I am to keep the clerk's office at the county seat, attend the sessions of the board either myself or by deputy. I'm to keep the seals and records and papers of the Board of Commissioners, and I shall sign the records of the proceedings of the Board of Commissioners and attest the same of the seal and the county. First, I shall record in the book of, provided for that purpose, all proceedings of the boards. Second, to make the regular entries of their resolutions and decisions on all questions concerning the raising of money. Third, to record the vote of each commissioner in questions submitted to the board if required by any member. And fourth, to sign all orders issued by the board for the payment of money. Fifth, to preserve and file all accounts acted upon by the board with their action thereon, and he shall perform such special duties as required of him by law. It shall be the duty of the clerk to designate upon every account which shall be audited and allowed by the board the amount so allowed. Such clerk shall also deliver to any person who demand it a certified copy in any record in such clerk's office or any account on file on receiving from each person a fee in accordance with the fee schedule. And I can go on and on about all the items that I shall do. The biggest thing is that I shall keep the receipts and expenditures of the county and shall enter them by fund. So with some of the most recent things that have happened, one being that we've moved payroll to an outside company. I'm still responsible for documenting all that data. It's not just processing the payroll. So there's additional duties that will have to go into play when I'm processing payroll. Can it streamline the process a little bit? Absolutely. But there's still going to be the work of reconciliations for benefits, there's still going to be the work of reconciliations for the payroll and making sure that they're accurately put into our system. I also have job description of the clerk that was presented during budget time. I don't know if it was reviewed. And historically, I have pay that has happened for the clerk's office over the last, since 2011. And when you add up what the auditor, the county clerk, and my election duties, back in 2011, the clerk was, the clerk's office was paying $57,000 for an auditor to prepare the budget, where I'm, and that was $13,000 we paid back in 2011. I'm only, I'm only asking $3,500 to prepare that. In addition to that, I feel like I bring a lot of experience to the table. I have always been professional in producing anything that's asked. And I'm just not understanding a lot of the decisions that are being made. You know, I asked for an extra person, and I was able to say, hey, I get it, budget's tight, I don't need the person, we'll continue on with our duties, but instead, we went out and we outsourced payroll and caused us to have more expenses to the county. We're still going to be doing a lot of the duties, and so I would ask for that to be reconsidered. I know we've started the process, I'm working with a company on that, but I still think it could be reconsidered. I also did a comparison of cities of the same population or similar valuations. And out of that, Bourbon County used to be the lowest paid. I was given some additional funding for preparing the budget, and most of these counties don't prepare their budget for their counties. They hire an outside firm. And the average pay for a county clerk is from 72,000 and the highest being 82,000. So I do not feel like that what is being paid to the clerk is out of, out of line with other counties. I know it was a big jump for one year, but it's because there was never any consideration given for 10, 15 years. And so that's, that's why I'm here, is just to kind of, you know, asking for some reconsideration. There was only two offices that were affected by this, and that is myself and the register of deeds. And those offices, the register of deeds, the treasurer and the clerk hadn't had a raise in many, many years. So I just ask for consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. You had something you wanted to add?
Yes, I was just.
Please.
On what Susan was going off of, I haven't seen the resolution either. I knew you were taking $5,000 away, but then when I looked at what Jennifer had given me last week, I'm cut over $25,000 out of my budget.
Okay, that's the next thing on the agenda, right? Yeah, for your, for your budget?
Yeah.
Yeah, let's, let's hold that until then, and we'll stick with this part here.
We can restate your motion. Chairman, please.
Hang on here just a second. I move that we approve the consent agenda, approving accounts payable for 9/525 totaling I also approve, or I move that we approve the 9/525 payroll totaling $326,473.16. I'm not going to add this resolution until after, we approve these two items and then we'll move on to that item. Because I think there's further discussion that needs to be made regarding this resolution. So. Do I have a second on the accounts, the consent agenda?
I'm sorry, I was looking at my notes. Could you repeat that last point? My apologies.
About the approvals or the tabling this until next item?
Yeah, that part, tabling.
Tabling the resolution 51 or 3125 for repealing resolution, for salary resolution for elected and appointed officials. We're going to discuss that next in more detail.
Okay.
Laura?
I'm open for discussion.
You have discussion?
There, the thing is, Commissioner Bierbauer, when something is moved, seconded, and all approved at a previous meeting, just waiting on the resolution to drop, it goes in the consent agenda. We've already approved this.
Okay, I haven't seen that part of the, of the process before. I just, you know, it was added to the agenda to be signed if it's already been approved, not part of the consent agenda that where we're approving payroll.
Yeah, I looked historically, and when they had a resolution that was approved one meeting, it was on the consent and next. I think it actually happened that way with the first one.
Okay.
But we can do it a different way this time if you would like.
No, let's just continue on then, since neither one of you have, I thought, since they got up there and made comments, I thought you guys had discussion. So if you don't have discussion, then I move that we approve the consent agenda for 9/525 accounts payable totaling $308,641.44. Approval of 9/525 payroll totaling $326,473.60. 16 cents. And approval of resolution, resolution 3125 salary resolution for elected and appointed officials voted and approved on 8/11/25. Seconded, do I have a, ayes?
All in favor.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All right, next on the item is Mrs. Holdridge regarding budget questions.
And when does that resolution go into effect?
First of January.
Yes, and we discussed that it was going to be when everything was integrated.
Okay. My budget question was that what Jennifer gave me the other day, looks like I'm cut almost 25,000, over 25,000, and the, down to a part-time person. And the clerk off, or the treasurer's office wasn't cut a person, they're still got four plus the elected official. A part-time person, this is why I've always argued for my two full-time, a part-time person does not care about what is very important for my office to be correct, for title companies to run a proper chain, because they get no insurance, they get no paid holidays, so they could care less. They're just there collecting 20 hours.
Laura, may I ask you?
Yes.
Your part-time person, are they now your full-time person?
They are mine now.
Did they care less before they were full-time?
No, because I had already been approved to have that part-time person as full-time. She just started a little early as part-time. I had to let the part-time person go, and she came in knowing that I was, my budget was going to be approved for full-time, because I'm redoing, or my office is redoing several things, and the title company are catching several mistakes and from the two part-time people that I had in the past, because, like I said, they don't, they don't care. So I'm still begging for my full-time person or my part-time person, which we've discussed that I can help pay for that out of my tech, as long as they can get benefits and the holiday pay. But you've cut me, I can't run my office on the amount that you've cut me. You cut me that severe. So I talked to Mr. Motley, and he said, Mike, it was your idea to cut me that.
It was not an idea. It was historical minutes of 2023, which I can bring to the table. I didn't know that you were bringing this discussion in particular, but I'd be happy to bring the documentation from the minutes where we went from that exact position that you're talking about from part to full in 2023, so we're just going back. We're just taking it right back to where it was. That's what was approved.
Yeah, to that.
Sure.
In that document, the part-time employee was receiving roughly $10,000. And then the commissioner at the time decided to chip in another $10,000. And that made that person full-time position is how I read that document. And then something happened between that period of time and January where the board, the board at that time was approached for an additional $5,000 for a job, a position that was already fully funded, that had been doing that same job since 2023.
Without benefits.
Well, how do you do a full-time employee without benefits? If, again, I'm asking the...
That's what I'm also asking.
I'm not, well, again, how does, how do you hire a full-time employee in the county of Bourbon and not give them benefits for two years?
I think they just bumped the pay possibly and just had it still as a part-time status.
Their hours all went to...
In 2023, that's when it went to full-time.
Their hours were adjusted from 35 to 40 and given a minimum of 15.
So they adjusted their hours from 35, which is part-time, to 40, which is full-time, without the, the benefits of, without giving them benefits. Is that legal?
No, they, she gets legal.
She just said they didn't get benefits. She just said it just now.
No, at a part-time, at 20 hours, a 20-hour person...
I understand that, I understand.
Does not get benefits.
I understand that, but she wasn't, she was bumped from part-time to full-time. And then, again, she was bumping another $5,000 at the beginning of 2025 for a position that was already funded two years ago. So it just seems like there was mission creep. It looks like mission creep.
Hey, I'm...
Mission creep means, that means that the funding kept going up, but the job isn't there. It's like, was, did we have a mass excess of people moving into Bourbon County? Did we increase by 5,000, by 1,000, by 1,200? Was, did the workload increase? Why was there a request for $5,000?
Because she, the person before that was just part-time, got no benefits. So they didn't care whether they did the right thing in my track index books. I'm saying that I understand if you need to go and take me down to 20 hours, I will make up the other 20 from my tech, but I don't have the money. So that makes her full-time. So then I want to make sure that it is budgeted for that person to have the benefits and everything, because they're going to be there 40 hours. They're just not getting paid out of general for the full 40 hours.
So maybe I misunderstood you, but it seems to me, I'm hearing, what I heard was, a part-time employee doesn't care as much as a full-time employee.
Yeah.
Correct. Correct.
But you have a full-time employee now that's not doing what they're supposed to in, by the auditor or whoever it is, whoever's looking at your records. You just said that like 10 minutes ago.
No, I didn't.
She said, she said, I mean, I interject.
Sure.
She said that the title companies are catching, are catching mistakes that were made by previous.
Oh, previous. Part, previous part-time.
Yeah.
Susan, can, am I saying it right?
Yes, I'll explain. So just a few years ago, everybody was at 35 hours. All, all the people here in the courthouse were at 35 hours. The commission made the decision to move everybody up to 40 hours a week, and their minimum pay would be $15. That's why you're seeing an increase in the pay. That's why her budget went up, is because of that. It, for years, they, they only got paid for 35 hours a week, but then they moved it to 40 hours, and now, and their base was 15, and that was all over the courthouse.
And that was not, that was not spoken that way in the resolution in January, because if I remember right, the, I can't remember who went to...
That was separate. The resolution in January was they were adding a position of a road records officer that was not existing before, and they tacked that on to a different salary.
Right. And they asked for another $5,000.
Yeah, it's just...
To me, it's like, but my understanding was that person was doing road view.
That part-time one.
That was in the minutes from 2023 that that part-time person was helping with road records. And then we paid for road records again. So we are bringing back things again and again. Yes, we are.
Because in the documentation, the person was part-time, was doing roads.
No, 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 no.
She was.
Okay. Deeds was doing roads. So the function belongs in that department. So that department got 10 grand for, for the employee. The commissioners at the time gave the department an additional $10,000, okay? And then in January, the Deeds came back and asked for an additional $5,000 for something that they'd been doing all along since 2023. And my question is, did, did the mission increase? Was there an increase in administrative duties? Was there an increase in mapping and whatever it is that you guys do?
Yes, I do that. They don't. It, we were trying to come up with one map. Right now, we have three.
Okay, so my question to you, ma'am, is how much did it increase?
She's asked for years.
That's not what I'm, Madam Clerk, that's not the issue.
I just...
How much did it increase? We need to be able to quantify the work that we're doing.
Okay, it increased $5,000. That's all I was asking for, was 5,000.
That's not quantified.
We can move on.
But I just need to know if my part-time person, because if not, they're going to leave, and a part-time person doesn't care.
I, I disagree with that, Laura. I'm sorry that, I, I mean, I work part-time at a job and I care. Okay, so I, part-time people do care.
I mean, call security first. We're there, we're finding errors, and we can tell the high handwriting, and they're finding more errors since I had part-time people than not. And like I said, I can pay to get her up to 40, but I just need to know if you're going to pay her benefits and the holidays, because she would be considered a full-time person. If county general is paying her 20, and I'm paying her out of tech, which I solely have control over.
Laura, I'm going to point of order, not because of you, but because this employee is going to be able to tell another people.
Yeah, and I asked for this to be in an executive session, and they declined. And so you should be having permission.
Because I don't know which person...
I'm just saying I don't want to get anybody in trouble, especially you as well. So I would say, I would ask for executive session so that, you know, you're talking part-time, people are going to be able to tell who you're talking about. So if that makes sense.
Okay, but they're going to know that she's part, whoever I decide to go part-time.
Well, this whole conversation, Laura, would have been executive session, but we had the discussion. Susan said that wasn't going to be how this discussion went, and so here it is in the open and, and...
It's a simple yes or no. Are you going to pay a part-time person, whoever it is? I only have two people. Are you going to cut somebody from Treasurer's office?
To me, to me, Commissioner...
That would be a deviation if it's a part-time person, and I brought the handbook. And so, like I said, you would, you would need to ask for a deviation if you want part-time to deviate from the handbook at this point.
My office has always had three people.
Dr. Cohen needs to be involved in the discussion, to be honest.
Well, my, my point here is if there's a deviation from one department, then what stops other departments from deviating?
Yeah, I understand.
You're setting a precedent.
Pass that around.
There's no, and, and my thing is, I, I empathize with, with Ms. Holdridge's position, but my thing is just because an individual is not doing what they're supposed to be doing...
If they're part-time.
That you don't reward somebody full-time if they're not doing what they're supposed to be doing half-time.
But she's going to be full-time, because I'm going to pay her the other 20.
So, but there's no guarantee that by paying her the extra 20, that she's going to do any better than what she's doing right now. There's no guarantee.
For two years.
Let's, point of order. We're, we're starting to discuss somebody that's going to get identified, so let's, let's, we can put this on the agenda for, go into discussion next week, because we're going to, in executive session, we're going to have the public hearing next week regarding budget then as well. So let's, let's move on.
I thought it had, the budget had to be done this evening.
No.
I'm just was still wondering why I'm cut over 20,000 and Treasurer's office is cut three.
Laura, we're just going back to what was on 2023 minutes.
But 2023, why are you going back?
Let's go ahead and move on.
We'll, we'll discuss, we can discuss it in executive session next week on the employees, and then on your budget, we can discuss that during the hearing.
Okay.
Okay? All right. Next up was 95th Street and Unique. Is that your?
Yes.
Okay. Registered.
In July of 2021, it was brought in, and in the minutes, Eric said that they would maintain 1,057 feet of that driveway. It's not a road. The man used to drive a bus, so I guess the county used to do his whole entire road.
Driveway.
His whole driveway. And the landowner to the north has access. He's not landlocked, but Security First has to have a resolution to be in my books so they can do title insurance. They can't go off of the minutes. They need a resolution. So I...
Need a resolution for what?
That whether you're going to go ahead and do what the other commissioners have done, and what Eric said Public Works would do, which would be maintaining 1,057 feet of his driveway to help the other landowner get to his field, or if you are going to make a resolution that that is a driveway, we do not do driveways and make a resolution, sign it, I can put it in my track index, Security First can do their...
I'm ready to do this.
Title insurance.
I'm confused why Security First, number one, why we're dealing with that, but number two, why would they need a resolution for title insurance that the county doesn't have an open road on that? I mean, a lot of counties service or main, help maintain bus routes when it snows and things like that, but I, I, I'm confused why my client, the commissioners, would have to make a resolution to appease Security First on a title issue on a piece of property that we don't have any right to do anything on other than just gifting the ability to maintain road. I mean, that, that's, am I, am I missing something on that?
I have no idea. They just...
I'd like to clarify.
Okay.
This parcel is one property owner. This is the driveway. This parcel is another property owner. The driveway is on, shall I say names of the property owners?
No, just say parcel 13, because it's...
Say parcel 1.
A and B. Because it says 13 in upper right-hand corner.
So we have parcel 1 that I believe has been surveyed. They want to sell the back half. Parcel 2 has this driveway that the county has and not has, and has and not has, debatedly, serviced part of the road. Driveway, correction. And they would like this to be considered a road so that they don't have to give easement or, or change, so that this don't get landlocked in the back, is from what my understanding is from talking to the title company.
They don't want to make it a road. They just want to make sure that that back half is not landlocked.
Well, that's not...
Then they should give an easement on their property.
Well, if you're going to, if you're going to open a road, that's a whole different procedure generally.
You have one right there.
Never been a road.
If it's never been, if it's never been a road, then it's a taking by a government agency.
Of land.
If the commissioners wanted to do that, and all the landowners agreed, I suppose we could do that by deed or an agreement, but the commissioners can't, in my opinion, can't just say, we're going to resolve to do this on these people's property without those people consenting to it, because that's a government taking of land. Do you follow me on that?
I understand the government taking of land, but it was the landowner with the driveway. He wanted the whole driveway, just like it was. He no longer drives the bus, but he still wanted the county to maintain his whole entire driveway.
Have they explained it to you?
No, well, I want to know what area is not, not areas being sold that's been serving.
Yeah, if Mike wants to go ahead and explain it, I'll let her explain it.
What area has been serving? That's going to be landlocked if it's...
From what I understand, this back, over here, so this driveway is on...
This side, yeah.
Yes.
But then, okay, over here, they're splitting that property.
They're wanting to, from what I understand, they want to split this, and this, they want to still have access without having to give access through here. They want to be able to access this.
Okay. I, I'm seeing the picture now.
So it's a no for me.
Okay. I, I, I don't see any action that we need to take that for them to deal, to figure out.
You can't unilaterally take somebody's land.
No, I mean, and there's enough, I mean, if they wanted, if they want access, they can gain access by making a driveway on their side of the property line.
And from what I understand, the this, the one with the driveway agrees to it because they'd really like to have it maintained by the county, but that's not really in the county's best interest. So again, it's a no for me.
I take it from the point of view where you're asking the taxpayers to maintain something that you directly benefit from.
Yep.
I don't think that's right.
Yep.
Now I move that we go into executive session pursuant to, let me find my...
Pursuant to 75-412, did you get it?
Yeah, I got it right here. Here we go. I move that we go into executive session pursuant to KSA 754319B1. percent to KSA 75 4319 B1 to discuss personnel matters of individual, non-elected personnel to protect their privacy. This has been requested by Commissioner Tran. Time frame?
25 minutes.
25 minutes? And who will be present?
Uh, the three commissioners.
Three commissioners.
Let's bring in counsel.
And subject, job performance?
Yes, ma'am.
And counsel. 25 minutes. So, I move that we enter into KSA 75 13, 4319 B1 to discuss personnel, personnel matters of individual, non-elected personnel, job performance, be the three commissioners and county council for 25 minutes, returning here at 6:45.
Second.
And all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can we turn it in this room?
Yes, ma'am.
The whole issue is, there was a, the resolution 2023, I mean, $5,000 salary. Increasing personnel part-time to full-time in order to do.
Let me double check.
It was already cold, so it was both of them, both of them. Resolution set over.
That's the home place. On the west side, my brother lives up there.
Okay, I was thinking completely different.
5,000 was for supervision.
That road used to go all the way through, over the hill, over, over the hill, clear, clear the other side, go all the way through. Voted to close it from the back side, but on this side, they didn't vote to close it.
See, all that kind of stuff would love my paper.
We know we're all. I've been coming here for decades.
There you go.
It's just like, it's time to. That, that house.
Yeah, they, they didn't. They kept talking about how.
Down about the roof itself, and they even can't be ruined. They couldn't get down to get my net because she actually. Can't be ruined with me.
Oh, I'm sure, yeah.
That's a county road that runs. They have to officially close it and officially close it, not you. You have to publish. That's their house.
Or you can buy another player to.
My brother said he had.
It's hard to get any, remember watching the performance. I agree. I agree. More pitiful than pity. More pitiful than pity.
I would like to have it for years.
My only blessing is KU. The cheese cup, please, they got, they got a loose cake. You guys see the end of that, Bill's great again. Four minutes left, and Buffalo's down 15. They scored 18 points in 4:10.
Way to start. I thought this was going bad anyway.
Yeah. That was astounding.
Start. We're calling for the grades to come back to the receipt.
I mean, they took and showed you.
Yes, yeah. One and a half was most. Of course it is. All rest are for paper. No same event this year so far. Well, security of.
It's been three months and then I have to. She's.
They don't want to have the. Makes sense. As we're so well.
I hate to say this, it's bad. That's one of the reasons mercy might be here. They took over the remaining down there, do you want to please?
Well, yeah, the camera up there is zoomed in on the fan. I was gonna say, it's mine. It's an app. They don't shut it off. They definitely shut it. Why they want. Oh, really? I'm not, I'm not sure. I might give it lectures of petition there. Oh, it does.
Just lights on the way out.
Oh, dang, yeah. The wall I mean there. Yeah, buddy. You move over one seat. It is, yeah, man. What words, that bro, words you're running down there.
You know where my place is? You can tell him where the true to have her, right? I know where it says. Which one? The one or one that you, I think, that's not it. Listen, I want it over there. It's just north of Lynn's. West, south, it's just usually, south of Lynn's, or the little bridge that's.
Little wooden bridge.
It's that road that goes to the west, up through that section. So, it's not, I know which one you're talking about, and I think that one actually was close. Here a few years. Kind of like a, the whistle's crossing. Yeah, that no one here knew what they were talking about and referred to it. But now you gotta go over eight miles from Z to where you get to where each across the.
Go eight miles to the east before you can go south?
You gotta. Because they shut down the, those things and the Mars.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. I wanted to try to go through there here a while back. You ain't have that.
They just, they haven't closed it. They just have a fix to.
Oh, they've closed it.
They got like a berm across it.
I know that, but they have not officially, in this county commission meeting.
Yeah, they, they voted to close them. I watched media.
Since when? Since when?
About a year ago.
I've been there every meeting. I ever seen that come through here. All they, all they did is vote to put the berm in. They didn't officially, because if they did that, it has to go in the newspaper three times. They never hit it. So, it's not officially closed.
Then that's probably not official.
There you go.
That's what they done up there.
Because if you don't put it in the newspaper, you're not, they've sealed it.
Well, what's that road over there? It's over there by you. It's the same thing. And abandoned it.
So, Google's saying that that's usually road, uh, Unique.
You might think you're right.
Maybe, it's, it's unique, it's unique or not.
Unique actually doesn't go up there.
No.
Unique is on the south. I mean, I can show you all. We have road map up here, but, uh, and it's listed on the road map.
It's, it's like, you, when they have, you know, a picture upstairs, that I have property over there, and that is always able to go that way into that property was, that property got sold to a hunter and made.
Well, it's just like South Azim, where I used to live on. They did the same thing with it.
Well, one, the thing of it is, is I was concerned because I wondered if there was easement or anything, because there was a piece of land back there. And there was no way to get to it. And so, what happened is I went to the commissioners and asked for clarification. They were so good, they actually took me to the maps and everything and showed me there was no easement, because it's, it's, there's official records up here. And I was perfectly happy with that. And the guy that inherited that 40 acres up there, what he wound up doing is he sold it to people, so they're friends.
You're talking about the, it was South Azim. They used to name it in the record. But no more.
Yeah.
I bet you wouldn't do that now. Get four days.
Oh, really? Really?
Ever gravel road down to there? The type of metering pitched or we were like. Maintaining gravel. They're rich, rich off. It's one of the most impressive tracks for when I installed our hard road, the old road.
It's hard to get, hard to get their attention up here.
Five years, right now, a couple of nine years.
And this office has lost a lot of experience in the last five years. Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Maybe they still do that.
It's just like that. I know the whole story, but what happened is that road ran right over the hill.
It's just in front of your house or something. I, I got mobile ones.
But when it got to my brother and my cousins. Hey, you guys, that's what it was on the coast. And now if you look on the actual map.
Yeah. See, yeah, yeah. Right, just to write that.
Down there, our, our way, counting all the workers just, they just slept it and sprayed it. It's still there.
Should've gone back to.
Play Campbell.
Should've gone to law school. I got my law. He said they ran down to Pittsburgh also. He said they got it home, had it for about three, four days and sent it back down.
I can still be getting.
I think so. I think so.
County truck.
Huh?
County truck.
What is it? John Deere? They got, is that all John, they're all John Deeres? Because I was talking to Clay, oh, it's probably about three weeks ago, there was a John Deere mowing range road in front of my house. So, I called, I text Clay, I said, because I think last year he was on, I texted him, I said, "Do you want my, do you want my dad?" He just called right back and he said, "No, only me." He said, "My tractor and bro." I said, "Well, there's a John Deere mowing." And I said, "It's got a John Deere mower all night." He said, "Well, that's my county's," and I said, "I said, "Well, whose isn't?" He said, "I don't know." He, he said, "He was just kind of in his mother county's truck." But it had to be, nobody else brought mow that whole range road deal.
Was there a mild western?
Gotcha.
Well, it's gonna take a little while. I'm gonna stretch my legs. We're gonna have another executive session around this one.
Yeah. I would assume, yeah. The lady told me, he said that, he said, "All you need is all some of the white some roads." That's what he said. And then he said, "The major roads that are gravel, they're trying to mow," which, and he said, "Range road and all the major roads." But he said, "Up to that point, he said, "Also some of the black roads." I think it'd be terrible having to watch a movie show while I can't even put my phone over hardly enough.
I have to make sure the seat's cool.
Or I have a mirror that, I can't, I can't, I just can't put it anymore. I can't stand it. I like that. You gotta get ready to hit it.
What really spoils you is you get it when it runs and they got a camera.
Oh, just like your old car or truck.
Yeah, that would be awesome. I outfitted one when I worked at the dealership, the guy, he put one on like the front ramp, aimed at his pickup of his Baylor, so we could watch the egg going in pickup.
Yeah.
Then he put one on the back, so when you open the tailgate, you can get out the veil. You could watch the veil go around, okay, you shake the tailgate.
Then you always have to be watching for the telephone deal. Then you always have to be watching for the telephone to get all the moles. I just think I don't have to enter them all the whole time. Yeah, yeah.
That's what they want us all to do.
Right, absolutely.
Like you say, both are bigger than that chair to them. That weren't there.
Yeah, yeah.
Little person, maybe they tried to mow it down along there and pick them all up.
Yeah, yeah, get them out of the weeds.
Speaking of little person. I talked to my daughter when she was there. And she does not have an anniversary.
Okay.
They had two words about that long. That's the one problem was. And they want to keep her for a week. Well, it's like when, last year we had lunch with mom and we were just talking about it. Like we said, they ain't no anniversary. Cause you know how mom's mom's was like, we're getting there tonight, like right now. They were in the road.
Yeah.
Brain is absorbing the blood back into the system. And then somebody turned down. They said, and it's an anniversary. They said, they have had the same thing.
Really?
I just know when mom had her one, just a surgeon told me. That she was lucky all in. Grew and touched her often. Lord, he's making the head. So most people have, I think, happen to just do the first day. Mrs. Sick, got a granddaughter. My wife got the flu for a granddaughter. She's been keeping me updated all day and I told her, I said, I'm not in any hurry to come home. She actually watched her when she was sick.
It's been a trip.
Four days. And it was just like twenty-four hours. She's two.
Yeah. Fifty years.
That's the one thing I can't handle. I don't like at all. If you hear what comes up. I just wanna crawl in a hole. I can handle it a lot, but I can't.
Okay, return to session with action. Commissioner Tran.
I second.
Yeah. All those in favor of returning to session? With action. Aye. Go ahead and with your.
So I make a motion that you allow me to go engage Dr. Cohen on this issue for administrative action.
I second.
And all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so now I move present to K S A seventy-five forty-three nineteen B two for consultation with an attorney for the public body of agency which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship. That was yours?
Yeah.
So we're gonna go, how many minutes? Ten?
Ten minutes.
All three commissioners and the counselor, we will return here at, let's just make it fourteen minutes and return at seven o'clock.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'll learn that. Uh, well, it could be fourteen minutes.
Um, Madam Clerk. What is that motion?
It was for B two. They didn't give them subject or that they would read.
No, sorry. The one for that with action.
Administrative action, we're giving Doc, uh, Commissioner Tran.
To consult with Dr. Cohen.
To consult with Dr. Cohen.
Yep, I'll be driving, driving west to go east now. I see K R P C.
You're beautiful, you're short sighted.
I'm refreshed.
I'm refreshed.
Not me.
I am a little tired, but I'm refreshed. Tell Stacy today, Mike. Mike, tell Stacy today.
Really good news.
Yeah, I saw that.
All I know is that they're gonna do another angiogram in a week. Then they're gonna stay at home or you gotta stay with mom?
Oh, scary. There's a lot that's interesting to me. I know why who lives on the corner. You know, you gotta go past the the bar, get the goats on it and you gotta get left and then. And that's great meat, that's great. Oh, yeah. You know, whoever's house. You know, John Doe lives at that house. Absolutely.
I mean, I thought you were talking about that. You don't really say the subject. Oh, that applies to tonight. I just, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't until, I mean, I heard that.
They didn't say when it was started.
Anne, have you ever eaten in that that's carries and Brerolms?
Percy's? No, no.
Have you?
I have not. I hear lots of good things on Facebook about it.
Well, Percy's. I got, my my kids are moving.
Yes.
Between Garland and Brerolm.
Yeah.
On that footpath. So I just kind of spoiled that character, it kind of ran across Percy's.
Heard good things.
What's the, what's the place, uh, west or eastern data Roosters, Gobblers?
Gobblers Roosters.
Gobblers Roosters, that that pretty good?
I've never eaten there, but it is very good.
Percy and I, sure it's hard to get into.
Yeah, you have to, I think you have to make reservations to come in.
Where are all these rich people coming from?
I don't know.
Well, they all live in Missouri.
Maybe three employees.
There used to be a heck of a chicken place in Brerolm. It was up to best place to eat at Cameron. But we ate there as kids, it was really good. And they would deep fry their baked potatoes. And the chicken was out of those.
The farmhouse there, rent is owned by a. Yeah, that camera needs some.
It needs some.
Refocusing.
Very well. There's. It was called Marlon, yeah.
Marlon?
Marlon.
My birthday's this week, I think the wife's gonna take me to Brerolm for lunch.
Well, that's a good. What day is your birthday?
Thank you.
What did you birthday?
September twelfth.
I did. Vangeline's is the eleven.
Nine eleven.
Nine eleven, baby.
Yeah, my birthday that year was not very exciting.
I bet it was not great.
Kind of damp in there. We'll send you the, we'll send you the, I'll send you a copy of the picture. Jason, we've talked about this. I said, say if I'm in the picture, I don't like it.
She was hiding over there.
Trying to stay out of the camera. But Jason's used to sit, where Susan's sitting and then I'd be sitting over here and he'd get me in the background.
Yes. I'm glad he's back over here. I'm glad he's back over here.
Again.
Sorry, Jason, I left you a chair over there.
You get to sit in the corner now.
I mean, if you weren't set by the fan, you would be center stage on the YouTube. Because that's what it's pointed at, that thing right there.
I don't want that.
That camera right there? I guess so. Looks like it's pointed at.
No, it's that one up there, see it pointed, pointing straight down? Right above the desk up there.
Gotcha.
Oh!
Should I put this down too?
I wouldn't know anything at all about YouTube livestreaming or anything.
Call, call IT, they'll be here before you.
Should it?
You said it.
There's some sarcasm.
I thought it, but you said it.
I told you that was...
You got better filters than I do. Nope.
The minute you bail, it's gonna hit you.
You guys made the, made the new deal, but people that drive get them up to the car.
Two shake, two shake.
If something comes up, just call me, I'll be driving, I got a call still in there.
All right, turn the...
Sounds good.
See you guys.
Thanks, Tom.
I move, we return back to session.
Second.
I'll see y'all.
Bye!
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. I'm moving to the next item. Public comments on items not on the agenda. And that would be you, sir, Mr. Wonder.
I'm not going over there, I'll, don't take but a couple of seconds, all I want to do is give a shout out to the guy that mowed the weeds on the corner of 135th and Popper Road. Done an outstanding job, and it's really appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Here we are next with old business, Maple Road. Let me get to this. Maple Road, that was during, a couple of weeks ago, public comments from Mayor Mike Houston, addressed the commission, uh, Mapleton mayor, addressed the commissioner on the need for road maintenance on, I believe it's 125th that passes through Mapleton.
Yeah, I think it's called Union Street.
Yes, and there's a history where the county has completed maintenance on that road, and we tabled it. So I believe to talk, for you to talk with Public Works personnel, as you are the liaison, so that's what I'm bringing, because it showed up on the agenda from being tabled, with my name on it, and so I figured...
No, I'm, I'm good with it, sir. So, it's, it's the road that runs north and south, connects 31st, 30, Highway 31, which was recently paved. And connects that to the old, uh, how was it, the Redfield Highway? I don't know the number, but it goes all the way down to Redfield.
125th.
Thank you, thank you. So it connects to that, but that road, um, it is in, it's in, it needs help. There's a couple of potholes in there, there's some low areas and all, all that stuff. And when I did ask, it wasn't something that we had maintained. So it was something that was delineated to the city of Mapleton, uh, and it, you could see it clearly, because when you go south, there's a line where the county maintains, from then on, the asphalt looks good. But north of that, it wasn't.
So I believe that, that Mayor Houston had advised that in the past, the fire, to, uh, that they did have taken it over off of a grant. Uh, but prior to that, the county had, uh, maintained it before.
Okay.
So there was historical, he was just wondering, since they no longer carry that grant, if maybe we would look at taking it back.
Okay.
Okay.
Now, so because of that, I asked for hard numbers. It's roughly 700 tons, and that's not to do it to the corner of Mr. Hu- Hughes, Houston or Husman?
Excuse me?
Houston.
Houston. I'm looking, if, the numbers I'm giving you are not to the corner of Mr. Houston's property, it's all the way to connect 31 to the highway down below. 135?
125th.
125, okay. So it's to connect 31 to 1, 125th. And the reason why I'm giving that information is, um, I could see where Mr. Houston's saying that people towing their ATVs and four-wheelers going down to that park, Rock Park, whatever, um, they do go through there, I could, I could see that. I, I went up there twice, um, at different times, just to see traffic changes or whatever. Um, so right now, what it's gonna cost the county is 700 tons, or roughly $36,729 to pave that road. Now, it's up to us to decide if that's what we want to do. I have not directed Public Works to do anything, that's not my job, I'm their liaison. Um, this governing body is gonna decide whether or not we do something with it, and that's why I left it at. Okay? So, I just, I would caution us that if we decide to do this, that it should be on a case-by-case basis. Um, I initially thought that we shouldn't do it, but once I drove up there and I saw where it connects Highway 31 was freshly paved all the way, in fact, I went down that road from somewhere up north, Pleasant, no, Mount City. I came down from Mount City, just taking the back roads, and I end up on it, and I end up in Mapleton, and it's, I was like, whoa, okay, you know, just looking around. So people do use it, it's a brand-new paved road, 31 is. Um, and it would work to connect down. The same way we're paving Maple Road from where it enters Union Town to where it hits Highway 3. So we did that, because it's, it's called interconnectal.
Right, yeah. You have some discussion on this, Commissioner Milburn?
So I think that if you, if it's a procedure to do interconnected roads, and you can prove that it is, then that's what it is. If it's not, then it's not. You talk to the lawyer, he says it is or it isn't. So, um, because if you branch off of that, then you have, um, what I'm gonna bring up later is a subdivision that has a private road that would like some help also. Hidden Valley, they maintain their own roads, they'd like some help also, I'm sure Fulton wouldn't mind. See where, where we're going there. Okay.
I, look...
That's my comment.
Okay. I have no issues with that, ma'am. I look at it, we have a batch plant, makes sense, we have employees who want to work. It's just, it comes down to dollars and cents, but if we're grouping some of this through the tax money, then...
Right.
You know, I think our job is to make the county better. We, we leave it better than we found it. And if this is by some small measure making it better than we found it, I'm game for it.
Okay.
Because I'm pretty sure there's Yale, I think, still, Yale?
Yeah, Yale's on the, on the asphalt plan for this year, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But not, but not Yale going all the way out to Hidden Lake.
So this road is not on the, on our current asphalt plan. So I would say that next year, we're gonna go five commissioners. We're gonna be having budget talks and stuff a lot earlier. I would say that we could review that again when the time comes. On that and any other roads that, that, that are gonna end up being in this interconnected...
But in the meantime, I understand that, but in the meantime, what do you want to do about the potholes and stuff there on the road?
What do cities usually do when they have potholes on their road?
They patch them.
Who patches them?
Whoever owns the road.
So who owns that road?
Right now...
City of Lethem.
Right.
So they, they should probably patch them. So how do the small municipalities patch their roads?
They don't.
That's my point.
Say Garland does not have any road...
How do they patch roads in Fulton?
I don't know, I've not asked.
I think the cit, I think the township of Fulton has to raise the money to have that done, or, or they, they come to the table like everybody else to the county. You know what I'm saying?
Do they, do they not get money to maintain their roads? No, no money at all?
Not to my, not to...
I mean, they'd get a, they, they levy taxes, uh, without a crew, they don't, you can't levy money for road maintenance. I mean, unless you're gonna hire it out to be done, and then I think our taxes will then be through the roof overall for the county. I think...
Well, in those municipalities, they would, they would be more there in that certain...
Yeah.
Boundary line.
So, I don't know. I mean, I know now they don't have the resources to do it, and if we don't do it, it don't get done, and then, you know, that's, that's how it's gonna be.
I guess what I'm, I guess what I'm trying to say is, look, we have, we're in a position right now to at least do something for our constituents. It's not cosmic, we're not gonna go, I don't want to say that we're not broke, we, for intent purposes, you know, but we can patch some of those stuff, if we, if you guys would allow it. And I'm saying patch, I'm not saying repave, I'm just saying go in there and fill some of those potholes and fill in the low areas, you know?
I think for the rock climbing part that is on that route, uh, I think it would benefit us to do so.
Comments, Commissioner?
I mean, you're the liaison for Public Works. Are we behind at Public Works right now on ditches, on mowing? I mean, because I get a lot of complaints, um, I get a lot of personal calls about it.
He's kinda, there's some people taking leave, so, um, he's gonna have to parse back some of his work.
Gravel roads, I get tons of complaints about that. Um, I've heard, uh, even people that work at Public Works before you were liaison say, we should really go back to seventh graders. They would be out more often, we could dispatch them more, we could get more done. Um, so, so it's resources, how do you want to, uh, run the department? Do you want to let the new director decide what to do, or are we gonna decide what they're going to do?
We're not, that's my point, Commissioner.
So if we're gonna deviate...
We're not gonna micromanage them, that's what I'm saying. We're not gonna tell, we're saying, look, if you got time, you got space, you got manpower, knock yourself out.
Okay, because that's what it feels like we're doing here, is we're trying to tell them to do something they haven't already done, and deviate from whatever their current plan is.
Well, we did that with putting in a cove for a cemetery. Okay?
I don't think that...
Well, that's, that's, that's resources.
Yeah.
Okay, we did it that one time, one off. Okay, we're doing things, like I fielded a phone call from, uh, Fort Scott Lake. You know, I spent considerable amount of time trying to figure out who owns, I think it's 95 and 90? I think that's the road, one's on the east side, one's on the west side, going down both sides of the lake. And I found out, okay, the first half mile belongs to the city, but anything past that belongs to the county. Which forward me, because I'm like, how's that work? But I guess that's a horse trade deal that the county and the city got into way before I came here. So it is what it is. You know what I'm saying?
And I would, you know, I'm, you know, it wasn't that long ago that we approved to allow these small municipalities to...
The dump.
Use our dump.
I know, you bring that back to me all the time. But I would rather the trash all be in one place, so...
Well, and I would rather not have to deal with wrecks on roads, you know, on high-traffic roads.
Oh, that's a stretch.
It's gonna cost us money.
But you know, on this, look, Commissioner Milburn, on this road, I would say yes, for me, because when these guys are pulling trailers down through there, because I take that road to go north. I take 7 to 31 all the way out to Prescott and take off to go to KC. And when it's the three-day holiday, these guys are hauling ass down, down that highway with their ATVs and UTVs and everything else, their Jeeps. So if they're going through that little town, but I will respect your wishes. Yes, ma'am.
Uh, is this something to where you guys set expectations with your Public Works with, and I would go down to diameter, let's say, the county would fix and...
You're talking like three foot or less, four foot or less?
You can take a bath in it.
Yeah.
You know, um, something like that, to where you are taking care of, but you're not dipping into paper runs, you know? I don't know, so that's just a...
No, that's a good suggestion.
Like diameter-wise, we would be willing to cover these, you know, it's kind of a, an ask your...
So setting, setting a standard, setting a...
Yeah, and go back to your Public Works to see if they're willing to...
Does that $36,000 cost improved labor, or is that material?
Uh, I believe that's everything.
Okay.
That's something I asked Dustin on my way down, he just texted it to me.
Do you think Mapleton would be willing to pay for material?
I think that was what something Bronson had asked about a couple, uh, last year, yeah, but I asked the same thing.
Do you want, do you want me to approach him, do you want me to? Because it sounds like you guys are not gonna go for it.
Well, I don't think, you have to make a motion if you're gonna, you know, or ask for consensus. But I wanna, anybody, I mean, this is an agenda item, so it's, uh, we're done, okay, Mr. Walker, step on up to the podium.
Yes.
On the subject of that road, uh, that is a very highly traveled road. I'm off of that on tomahawk, and I see the amount of traffic that comes in from the rock park, and there's a ton of it. Well, the second portion of that is, is I seen how big the holes and stuff are up there on that road, and that's a school bus route. So that's all I have to say, Commissioner.
All right, thank you. And any other questions from the audience, public?
I can speak for you, ma'am, I've been used to that road too, so, I don't know, do I that way? So, that's something to consider too, I think.
So I would like, I, what I'd like to eat tonight is I'd like to leave this table and be able to go talk to Public Works and say, hey, if you guys can do it this year, do it, you have the council, you have the committee's blessing. I'm not gonna direct you to do it, if you can't do it, you can't do it.
You're posing that as a question?
I, I'm telling you now, because if I get a feeling from you guys that I can do it, then I'm gonna do a motion.
I'm, uh, just one moment, please.
Could it be, if you're possibly thinking about this, that, um, as a clerk stated, could you re-approach the city of Mapleton and see if they're willing to pay for the material expense before you make a decision like you're talking about making? And I do agree with Mr. Walker and, um, Terry. That is the main thoroughfare from the north end of town to connect to County Seat here. That's how everyone from the Mapleton-Zini area travels to Fort Scott or the rest of the county.
Thank you, sir.
How many feet?
Um, it's roughly, I don't have mine.
How many ton, did you say?
Seven, 700 ton.
700?
It's a little bit less than a mile, I believe.
The other caveat to that is, City of Fort Scott asked for 2,000, and we told them we didn't have it crushed this year.
Well, okay.
So we have it crushed.
The follow-up on that, City of Fort Scott reached out to me and said they won't need our services this year.
Well, I understand that, but if we didn't have it for them, then we'd...
Well, but I, I thought we were working to accommodate.
Not this year, because it wasn't crushed.
No, we were working to accommodate them, but they, they, they came back and said they won't, they won't need our services.
I'm not gonna contradict myself.
I'm sorry?
Because we told them that we didn't have the rock crushed for 2,000, so we did or we didn't at that time.
No, we didn't say we didn't have it, we said we were gonna work to get it, we need to figure out how much we had and how much we're gonna use, because the guys didn't do anything till the eighth month of the year. Makes sense? So when they start up in my, like today, they're up on Soldier Road, north of, uh, the gas station.
I was told before the liaison that we had enough crushed...
Mm-hmm.
...to do our current plan, and that's what I passed on to Brad and everybody else. I think we all talked about it for... I think we all talked about it for a very long time and that anything extra that they had was to go to Yale. I don't know why we would deviate from that rather than plan.
I understand that point of view. All right.
I, uh, my consensus is that I believe that we should, we, we should assist them just like we were going to do Bronson and just like we were going to do Fort Scott, so.
Okay. Then I ask, my motion is, allow me to talk to Public Works and if we have the asset to do it, the manpower, the material, that we'd be allowed to do it.
And I add that you talked with, uh.
With Mapleton, yes, yes. Let me talk to Mr., well, Mr. Houston's not mayor yet, is he?
I believe he is, ma'am.
No, it's Mr. Burton.
Mr. Burton? Okay, so let me, let me reach, let me reach out to him.
Oh, they're running, okay. I'm jumping ahead of myself. Okay. Well, I don't, yeah, a second. All those in paper?
Any discussion?
I thought we had discussion. You want more discussion?
I didn't know there's a motion. When I was done with discussion, I thought we could maybe take a week, but since there was a motion and a second, then yes, I have discussion. Be advised, I, I do believe that we got the bridge grant. Is that right? But we need to come up with a hundred thousand dollars, um, for that match. So this is thirty-six thousand dollars. So, again, I think that you should see what the city of Mapleton could put towards that before you make a motion. I would like to have all of the information personally, if you feel like pulling your motion.
I think that's a fair question. So, I think it's a fair question. Let me pull my motion. Let me talk to him.
Okay, so we'll table it till next week?
Sure.
Sure. All right, next up is phone system meeting. Uh, okay, so I received an email on August twenty-seventh addressed to all three of us from a Nick Dobinmeyer. Account executive with SLED, uh, Zoom Video Communications, which stands for State Local Education, refers to Zoom's focus on providing its video, video and communication platform to government and educational institutions in the United States. The platform offers by this company includes video conferencing, team chat and phone services. I referred this representative to the IT liaison, Commissioner Milburn. Has there been any follow-up? Have you received a come, email from him?
I did receive the Zoom email and another follow-up Zoom email. Um, that's not on my list of priorities right now, so if you want to take that, you're welcome to.
No, I just, I, I wanted to see if you followed up, because we've already had two other phones, we had Callcan.
Certainly did not. No, I did not.
No, okay. Do we want to ask these gentlemen a brief presentation? We've had a cloud company and a Callcan and that are both phone services.
You're welcome to put them on the agenda so they can present, um, their services.
Yeah. I don't have, I don't have a problem listening to somebody else, you know.
Okay, I will, uh, reach out to him and.
So when he does come in, he's going to come to the top of the meeting, right?
Right. Depending on how they do it.
Right. They might zoom in.
Yeah, they might. Yeah, we got Zoom. Okay, um, next up is software. Uh, this again. Uh, I have been, uh, in contact or received email from a company called Diligent. And they are a software program. Uh, here's some of their selling points. They are, uh, they streamline governance for public sector boards. Their goals are to enhance transparency, improve efficiency and increase community engagement. And, um, the platform is designed to eliminate the manual outdated process to a digital solution for managing board functions to include meetings and agenda management. Uh, that includes features such as a den, digital agenda builders. Provides a dedicated public website where citizens can access meetings, agendas, minutes, policies and live-stream videos of meetings. Allowing for public comment submissions and meeting notifications. Platform provides a comprehensive security management, uh, to protect sensitive information and allow easy public access. Um, their final selling point is accessibility and inclusion. And, uh, it's a platform built to, uh, accessible to wide ranges of users with features like closed caption and live-stream meetings and ADA compliance. Uh, the cost is attached to this worksheet or this sheet that I gave you. Depending on the package, cost starts at around eighty-five hundred dollars a year. I did not, uh, have the cost until just a couple of days ago, although I like this platform, uh, what this platform offers in transparency, inclusion, especially the live-stream capabilities, which would be a tremendous upgrade from what we now have. Uh, the cost is, uh, the busy, is the biggest issue and one not easily overcome. Uh, if you're interested, uh, they will be willing to do a team presentation and, uh, then we can go from there. Uh, so I'm going to open it up for discussion, starting with you, Mr. Tran.
I think we should hold off. Um, I'm not saying that they're good or they're bad. I'm just saying hold off. We have a project in, in the works with Stronghold to basically take care of our network. Um, we need to see what fruits that project bears us, um, where the system's at and then reassess. Does that make sense?
I, I understand.
It's kind of like putting a, it's kind of like putting a supercharger on an engine that's got a hundred fifty thousand miles on it. Chance, yeah, it's going to be good, but how long is it going to last? I want to make sure we rebuild the engine first before we throw.
Okay, okay. I see your point.
Where did you find this?
They, they emailed me.
Just a cold call?
I mean, I mean, it was an email addressed, I think it was addressed to all three of us before it comes across our, our county email. And I just reached out to them and wanted to know what they offered and then went from there, so. We still open for discussion. Your turn.
I'm taking my turn. I'm, I'm asking you questions. I mean, you, you reached out and you spoke to them, so I'm asking you questions. So what's, what, what do you see this service doing for Bourbon County? What do you see it streamlining?
Well, to me, I like the idea of the agenda builder, because it does, it is a ongoing thing that you start and all the way up to publication of it. Um, it does allow public access to a website, which they don't have now, that, that is.
So a live action agenda.
Yeah. And then also, uh, live streaming capabilities.
And so I could add, you could add, the public can see what we're adding, but they can't edit, but we add and everybody sees it real time.
Yeah, I mean, and I, I only got basically what you were adding.
Do that for free.
That's what I'm, why I'm bringing this to the table.
Okay.
And it was a cold call to you, sir?
Yeah.
It's not in my inbox. I, I, I would be willing to look at it at future day, but right now I just think we have a lot on our plate. We still have a budget to get done. And I think once certain things happen, then we can go back and take a look at it. Do we have the money for it? I mean, you're right, that eighty-five hundred is.
Hard deal, yeah. There's nothing, I mean, uh, well, are you still looking at some stuff?
With this?
With this? Questions, concerns? Okay. You had spoken before about Adobe, yeah. Can you, would that do some of what this is talking about? If you would, please.
Um, the Adobe agenda that I send out allows you to click over to the side and you can jump to whatever, whatever attachment is there. Um, so that already, that capability is already there. If you want to do an agenda builder, we have, um, through our platform already, which is called SharePoint. And we can, we can do a agenda where you guys are adding different things. You can add, upload your, like you, you could have uploaded this document so that everybody could see it. And so then that, we've got the capabilities there to do that. Um, putting all of our agenda information and minutes on our website, we run out of space. And that's probably our biggest hurdle, is we don't have a lot of space and so he has to archive quite often. So, um, that would be the only hurdle we would have, is probably the website.
Stronghold would probably address as well, is the, the space size on our website.
Yeah, um, Red Logic is the one that does our website.
And they're out of.
Mount City.
Mount City, yeah. So I'm familiar with SharePoint and I'm familiar with Adobe. So I mean, both of those, they're functional, they're, they're used across.
I, I agree. I mean, I, I, and that's why I was wanting for discussion, you know, I didn't want to just center in on this thing, especially with the price tag. When I, when I learned the price tag, I was like, you know, it's maybe Cadillac versus Toyota.
I drive a Toyota.
I see.
I can't help it that you support foreign country.
Hey, it is what it is, buddy. I support my pocket.
Okay, all right, so then, uh, this is, I have no motion to go with this.
Okay.
We'll just leave it alone for now and, uh, look at other solutions. Next up is hospital equipment update. I really, um, we finished, uh, with gov deals. We have not finished totally with them. We still have three lots that didn't sell. So my question to you before I repost them for the third time.
Wow.
You know, because we have ran them through for two weeks and these are the items that didn't sell.
What are the items, please?
Oh, there's some, um, exam tables in one lot. There's some cabinets. There is a x-ray machine, uh, that nobody decided they wanted to buy, uh, which I don't think it works. I think there's a big poster, poster on it that says this does not work. So, uh, I had talked previously with, uh, Brian Allen, uh, about, you know, whether we should hold a, uh, local option, whether they can go with gov deals and allow local, I mean, basically, or just scrap it. Because that's basically what people are going to be buying, buying for, buying it for now anyway. It would probably be scrap, scrapability or parts. So, I mean, that would be my question to you, to you guys, is how do you want to proceed with what's left?
How much does it cost to put on gov deals?
Gov cost, I mean, it's not a charge to us. It's charged to the seller or a buyer.
This is the third time we're posting it?
I could post it for a third week.
You get any bites the first two weeks?
No, not on these three lots. We sold a lot. We sold a bunch, about five thousand.
The three lots equal.
Total of three thousand dollars, almost two.
How much, what kind of equipment would it require to take, get rid of three lots? I'm trying to figure out like cubic foot in my head.
Oh, I mean, well, they're, they're selling lots, so I mean, it's, you know, how they, when gov deals come in, they took picture, uh, four cabinets and made that a lot.
I'm, I'm familiar with D, D R, D R M O, I understand.
So, I mean, I, I could tell you, it's probably a good truckload to go to the junkyard if they would take it all. I mean, there's some things that I can take. There's padded exam tables that are wooden. There's desks that are wooded. I mean, that's why I'm thinking locally, some of that stuff may still sell. And we have a piano there that was part of the building when we took, when we purchased that building. And there's stuff in the basement that even you, you know, that we probably could make a pretty good sized local, uh, option.
It's valued at fifty dollars a month and you have to do an auction.
Yeah.
Does it have any value if nobody will bid on it? Where do you get your values? A web, government webpage, where do you get the value for these things that nobody wants?
I don't know, because these things were valued at, or opening bid at ten dollars and didn't, nobody bid on them. And I couldn't bid on them, so, you know, I would have solved your problem a long time ago.
Is there something that officially tells you, like, some sort of insurance appraisal, what something's worth? I mean, can you get that?
Googled them. I mean, there's some equipment that's worth thirty thousand dollars out there, but brand new. It's not what they sold for.
Can your insurance company that we pay to be our insurance company, if something were to happen to something like that and they were our company, what would they pay us for it? Is there a way to ask them for a value?
You could ask that. I'll give you that.
I don't want that at all.
I'm saying that I'm not going to make it any more complicated than it is. These are items that did not sell on a, on an internationally global website. So either we post them locally and sell them, or we get rid of it.
Who's going to post them locally? I'm wondering that.
Well, we would have to hire an auction firm.
So an auction firm's going to come in here and you think that they're going to spend their time to list things that nobody else wanted, that have been on the internet three times, when we didn't give a local company the auction in the first place?
Okay, so you don't think so?
No, I don't think so.
Okay, so then what do you want to do with it? What's your suggestion?
I, I didn't hire them, so.
Okay, we still got the equipment, regardless of who hired them or who didn't hire them, we still got the equipment. So this board has to decide what to do with what's left up there. Because Public Works is not going to want to keep being left in their building for long term. And for me, I mean, I've, I carried out the assignment that, that, that came to me by default and carried out what, what was done. Gov deals did their part of it. So this isn't stuff that didn't sell. So what are we going to do with it?
How much metal's in that stuff?
Well, some of it's got, a lot of metal. There's a lot of glass, too, and a lot of plastic. Sorry. I thought I turned that on a while ago.
Somebody turned it on.
Okay. I mean, still discussion, let's.
I, I, my, my gut feeling is just eighty-six it, but you got to do that in the proper way.
We have to, we have to follow protocol. And if it's valued, I mean, these things went on the auction block at ten dollars, except for the x-ray machine. And so that would be the one thing, unless we run it again for a third week and let it go at ten dollars, then we'd be below that fifty dollar threshold.
Because the only other option I could think of, right, options we have right now is run it again, donate it or eighty-six it.
We've donated out everything. I think we can donate all of that stuff, but, so.
So, I, I don't.
You got further?
Will the garbage take the x-ray or is it, is there any controlled things in it where our dump couldn't take it?
I don't know.
There's usually an x-ray machine that has radioactive.
Probably why nobody's bidding on it. I mean, I don't know. I mean, Spider-Man ain't around, so. Public comments? Uh, no, it's, it's old. Yeah. It's just got a sign on it that says does not, does not work.
So the tube's still there, so it's hazardous.
Yeah, so, Mr. Motley?
Uh, the, uh, Fort Scott Inn, it just changed its super eight, sold a lot of their furniture because they have to upgrade. And then the stuff that didn't sell, they posted, were giving it away and people came and took it away. That would be, that would be for the benefit of Bourbon County people and, um, you know, just make sure they have a Bourbon County tag or.
But to me, it's like, you got to make sure we do that by, by the regs, by the rules.
Right.
And that's why I asked for the appraisal from the insurance, what they would pay out. That's why I asked for that.
Question?
Uh, I think you could use the starting bid as its appraisal if no one took it.
Right, the x-ray was starting at five hundred on the last bid. So that's why I said if we want to run it a third week, I can set the, the opening bids at ten dollars for each item, for each lot. And then if nothing sells at that point, then we can move on from there.
Then I would ask you run it a third week if we can do it.
That is the third, okay.
I said drop the price.
All right, so then I'll take that as the consensus to run in the third week.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, um, the FSA CF grant, which was next, uh, I was going to ask earlier that that be scratched anyway, because the deadline was August thirty-first.
So we can't, we scratch?
Yeah, just scratch it. We are now at 7:30. So, actually 7:39, so do we want to?
I thought it was at 8:00.
You want to, okay. I didn't, didn't know which one we agreed on. Okay, so we'll go till 8 o'clock.
So I change it to 8?
Yeah.
Change it to 8, okay.
Okay. Alright, so next up is stronghold. That, who has asked for that to be on the?
I think you have an old agenda.
Yeah.
Oh, I thought it was on their revised agenda.
It should be security cameras.
Okay, security cameras, that was me. By default.
Would you mind, I mean, if we have a time limit and your name is at the top of all these, would you mind if I move some things up? Or we go ahead and finish this agenda as it stands?
Well, some of these are going to go real quick. Okay? Uh, because on this one, it was actually with I T, with stronghold and with human resources, both. Because I had made a proposal with a policy that we tabled to have these two services looked at. You're the liaison for both of those, or for one of those services, I T. So have we got anything moving forward on security camera policy? Would be my question to you.
I believe we have I T policy. What kind of security camera policy would you like to see?
Well, I, I believe there, Dr. Cohen and both I T said that. I haven't seen a, an I T policy yet. Have we approved one?
There's, I mean, there's one standing. There's an I T policy that everybody signs when they come for work here.
Yeah, there's an I T policy that we wrapped into the new handbook. And I did talk to Dr. Cohen this week about the hand, or last week about handbook. He says it's forthcoming. He's checking with Trevor. So he says he's going to check with Trevor. And that was the thing on Friday when I spoke to him.
Alright, well then I'll, I'll just reach back out to him and talk to him about the security cameras. Because that's a separate, separate thing. I mean, there is a, there is policy that needs to be in place because you can't have it in common areas of employees and, and, and certain functions like that that we have not addressed as a board. That's why I brought it up once before. And then I, my understanding is that we were looking to.
What common areas, what common areas are you looking to?
Like break rooms, which I know we have cameras in. And other areas. I mean, that's the main area. Locker rooms and stuff like that, which are, you know, pretty obvious. You don't put them in the bathrooms and locker rooms, but, but break areas. And I think there's something in policy with security cameras that if you're audio, you gotta, you know, it has to be in writing that the employees know that it's audio. So, I mean, there, there's some, it's not just stick cameras out there and then.
Sure, sure, sure. I, I, I get you.
With anything, there is. And I'll, I'll talk to Dr. Cohen tomorrow about regarding what they were working on. To see if they, because he said that they had a, a particular policy for cameras. So I'll just reach out to him.
Does this have to do with certain, certain entities of public work?
Well, the original policy that I drafted up was all about Public Works and, and landfill. Because they just put up new cameras at the landfill.
When did they do it?
Huh?
You're talking a while back?
Well, just recently. They had cameras that weren't running, that hadn't worked for years and then all.
Yeah, that was, that's been a couple of months, huh?
Yeah, okay. Um, next on the agenda is?
So is this done or are you tabling it to another time?
I'm going to talk to Dr. Cohen because we don't have a policy.
Okay, so you're?
I thought, I thought we had, had been working with I T.
Are you going to bring it back to the table?
Yeah, I'll table it and bring it back next week.
Oh, you know, that might put us over a little bit because I think a lot of this stuff is going to come back next week. So you might have to pick another day. We have three things on next week already.
Okay. One in two weeks. Next up, um, is crawl can. That's not, is that you?
No.
Are you?
Uh, that was tabled from a past meeting.
We were going to decide whether or not we're going to go with the offshoot for, I think it was like $1,300 a month? Or are we going to stay status quo for $1,100 a month?
Uh, well, actually, they were giving us a discount to what we're paying right now is what they said. They were gonna, if we signed a new lease agreement, it was going to be 1,100. And right now, I think we pay 13.
Right.
So. But Bob was going to look at that, if you guys remember. But every month that we don't do it, we're not saving $200. But he was going to look at that contract because it did lock us in there for a while.
Right. Because my thing on that contract is I want, I would like to have a clause in there where it says the county can terminate for convenience.
So do you guys want to turn this over to Bob to, to work on that?
Yeah, I thought, okay.
I thought you should, you should have had it by now.
Why don't we reach back out to Bob and find out where he's at on it? And add what Commissioner Trand is.
Yeah, because a lot of these contracts does not allow the county to get out of it without facing hefty, whatever, fines or monetary outlay.
Okay. So moving on, rock quarry, Elm Creek quarry. That yours?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I didn't see a name posted, so.
Um, I would like to know.
You have the floor.
I would like to know if we were going to go ahead and move forward with clearing the overburden at Elm Creek Lake per the previous two, two commissioners ago, per their direction. There was a presentation that was given to the commissioners about Elm Creek and how we could get, turn that into a quarry and be in benefit to the county. And we wouldn't be having to pay leases. And anyways, they're ready to go. They just need, they just need to know if, if we want to do that or not.
I believe the plans were made to do that, were they not? Did they make plans to do that already?
That plan was supposed to have been done May of 2025. That's when they were supposed to do it, but.
Yeah.
It's, that's gone past.
Stuff going on there.
Yes.
Yeah.
So.
Okay. Here's my points.
Okay.
I approved the initial proposal for this after assurances were made to citizens in the area regarding vehicle traffic noise and dust control. Assurances were also made regarding no interruptions to the activity of the lake itself. I am the only one remaining of that group that, that approved that. I'm also, and, and that even brought the proposal forward on turning that county-owned land into a rock quarry. I had some apprehensions back then that these assurances were valid. Uh, I have also, and I have been opposed even when I was campaigning to the county owning and its own rock quarries. I don't know that it's financially feasible to do so. I have advocated for cost analysis to see if the savings to our pack, to our taxpayers are actually there as well as the impact, as well as an impact analysis, not just including environmental or biological, but the economic and social impact to that area. And the historical significance of the lake itself. The earlier proposals were nearsighted and driven by outdated and incomplete data on, on, on the cost of the county running a quarry. I asked that we conduct comprehensive analysis, either by an outside company who, whose expertise is in this area, or through a citizen advisory committee made up of persons with a background in construction and environment field. That's my point. Discussion? Your discussion?
I'm just, go ahead, man. Maybe you've got something to say.
I'm just here to listen.
Okay, so the information I have is we would own a quarry, minimum overburden, no competitor, no competition with private sector, 45 years plus of rocks, south central location in relationship to the county. It would create a larger lake over time. We would save lease payments of $26,000 a year. Overage royalty fee is 20 cents a ton, 20 cents a ton. So 40,000 ton equals $8,000. Production costs for the county is 3.88 now. I did speak to a, a private individual who happens to have a quarry. And that number in their summation is a little bit low, but the high end of that summation would be five. So rather than $3.88, it'd be $5 a ton, which is well within standards for. I have the price sheets for the other quarries around here. That's quite, we're, we're a lot lower than that. So anyways, they have the price here, like the private sector selling road rock for $9.30. Now granted, these numbers are last year, so now this year's number, 14.5, uh, 14, 14.45 a ton. Half inch chip is 23.45 a ton, quarter chip is $20 a ton. So that's the information they provided. I'm not sure, there, there's a SWIP plan in there. They did go through and got all the, the state required documentation. They got an engineer to sign off on it. I did see that. There's a site description, the documentation's all here. I'm not sure what else we need. I mean, either.
Well, I, I mean, and granted, the 3.88 to $5.
Yeah.
They always used to just say $4 a ton. And you said that was last year. Well, I can probably find it four years ago that that was the same figures back then. And same on the, on the, you know, and, and you reached out to private sector, so now you know the current price. And, but I don't believe that with inflation and stuff, that the $4 a ton stays the same. And, you know, and again, I don't believe that the impact analysis for that area was, has ever been done. I mean, not just talking about the environmental impact on it, but to the lake itself, the, you know. And I know, you know, we're looking at repairing the dam. We're looking at, we've already put time and effort into the shelter houses out there. We, we are looking to expand on, on, on that and try to, try to enhance the camping capabilities and stuff out there. And I think having a big old hole in the ground at the end of, of the lake, right where everybody's going to drive by from 39 Highway to, to, had to cross, cross paths with dump trucks and, and everything else. I just don't think that's going to be beneficial to that lake area. And I think that, until, you know, I'm going to, I'm going to keep opposing county-owned rock quarries until somebody can show me numbers from a third party that, that isn't biased towards, towards wanting it one way or the other. That we're, that we're actually saving money. So, I mean, that's my opinion.
Why would anybody want it if it didn't save money?
Why did they start, I mean, why do we do a lot of things that don't, you know, we, we've had a lot of things in this, in this county that don't save us money. We, we buy vehicles off of Purple Wave. We, we don't have a maintenance program. We don't, I mean, there's a lot of things that don't save us money that we don't do, that, that's never been done. I'll, I'll get to you in just a minute, sir.
I think, I think the prospect of losing the, the, the two quarries that we currently lease, at the very, at the very least, we should be looking at this.
Okay. I mean, why are we losing the two that we're leasing now?
I'm not saying we're losing. I said there's a prospect, there's a possibility that we could lose it. One of them might be played out.
Okay.
I mean, and that's not, that's, that's not me saying that. That's, that's the, the individual that I spoke to told me that, hey, they think that that one of the quarries that we currently are mining from, it's, it may end up being played out.
Okay.
Which leaves us one other quarry, which is also leased. So again.
And, I mean, I understand wanting to go with one that, that, that we own the land on because we've been burnt two or three times by leasing out.
Right.
Which goes into the cost analysis of whether this was ever feasible to begin with anyway.
Right.
And, and maybe that, you know, I'm, I'm not going to point finger, I'm not going to say because I, I don't have 100% proof, but if I owned land and I was getting a rock quarry and getting lease payments on a rock quarry, I would probably push to have people vote for that over purchasing from a public one, too. Just saying, you know, in the few, in the past, that maybe that's how this all started to begin with.
I can't speak to that.
Well, I can't either. That's why I'm saying we don't have a unbiased third-party group out there that has said it is cheaper. I mean, how many counties around us are, are doing this very same thing? Or are they purchasing their rocks from somebody else? How many of them run their own rock quarry? How many counties in, in, in our area right now are running their own rock quarries? That would be a question. I'm just saying before we proceed down this road and we start tearing up land and blasting and running trucks up and down roads in a new area.
Okay, so have you been given a tour of the area?
I know we're there. I've been there, yeah.
I, I understand that, but have you, did somebody walk you through the boundaries of the quarry in relationship to the lake?
Uh, no, no. I, I mean, other than what they showed me on a map.
So the lake is, the lake, the primary portion of the lake is about 170 acres, roughly. The area that they're talking about is 13 acres. And it's in the southeast quadrant.
And how do you get to the lake from 39 Highway?
I don't know. I don't know the area. I just, I know, I don't know.
That's, that's the road that you're going to go, go on to get to the south end of the lake.
I understand that. But my understanding was all that stuff was clear. Because I was here during that meeting where all the people who had issues lived on, on. They came in and said they didn't have a problem. I was here that day.
Not everybody came in because I got calls afterwards.
Well, the people.
They said they didn't get a voice. They didn't even know about it being on the agenda because, you know. I'm just, I'm just saying, I mean, you guys, you know, if you want to make a motion, make a motion. I'm just saying my opinion and, and my opposition to it. I, I, I mean, I'm just asking that we get another party or, or, or have somebody else. We, we got plenty of people, just like we had budget expertise in this, in the county. We got construction and, and environmental people out here in our county that would, I mean, I would think they would be able to have great input on whether or not this is feasible for our county to, to own and operate quarries versus purchasing it from others. That's, that's my opinion. All right, if you guys are, are done on discussion, I want to open it up to the public, too. Okay. Anybody have, Mr. Smith, you had question?
I do. This sounds like something was shoved through in the previous administration and they didn't do it right. Who's the engineer on that? Now, I'm asking questions as a former licensed professional engineer. Okay? That's what I thought. And this approval that he made doesn't have an economic discussion? Well, the previous administration didn't get what they paid for. Because an engineer should not approve a plan like this without doing an economic discussion for the county to make its decision based on. And he should not do it without a environmental discussion for the state to make their approval of the plan for.
Was it approved by the state?
There was a SWIP storm water isolation plan. It's somewhere in here, I'm sorry. So there's a site description. Because it looks like the cost benefits analysis was done internally, Joe.
In where?
Internally. It was N O I. It was NOI. It was NOI. And that's all the documentation I have.
Yeah, and all this does is talk about stormwater runoff.
Right.
And the same is true in this site description.
Right.
That's not enough.
So-
It's not enough for you to make decisions on, you folks are trying to make a decision that should be left up to the county engineer, which you do not have.
Well, I don't discount, I mean, I trust Mr. Smith's advice. I've worked with him pretty intimately the last couple of months, so.
So what do we need to do?
This, this has just made a decision for me. I'm going to run for county commissioner in the upcoming election as a write-in candidate.
I wish you the best, though.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I think for now, I'm just gonna table this. I need more information.
Okay.
Thank you, Phil. Sir, the chair, here's a member.
Hello, Mr. Walker.
As a citizen who lives next to a rock quarry almost, I think that people overblow what the noise and stuff that rock quarries make and overblow the traffic in it. My wife in, in one week, or one day, counted 57 trucks went by my place. And including the big ones. And I don't have a problem with that because that's progress for our county. I don't know. I've been here since 2000 when I come back out of the army and I've lived here before I went in the army all my life. And I can tell you with this last public works director that our roads have improved a hundred percent compared to what they were. It used to be so bad that my aunt that lived up on the other side of Zini begged for gravel on a county road and she didn't get it. Well, guess what happened? She had a stroke and EMS couldn't even come get her. And are we gonna go backward? And if you're talking about who owns quarries, Allen County has a quarry as far as I know still because they bought the rock crusher off us last time when we sold the rock crusher. Uh, I get, I get the newspaper from Lynn County. If you've seen the amount of cost that they have and lay in pavement and stuff, they did all that stuff out. It's tremendous. And we're just going backward here. Normally the standard was 19 miles of pavement a year. And we ain't getting it this year. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I'm, I'm gonna table it, but I'm still gonna investigate. I'm gonna keep pushing forward. I will be talking to Mr. Smith about this.
Okay.
And yeah, there's no reason you couldn't get the studies that Mr. Smith is saying that the last commission came up short on getting.
There was a study. I, I remember, I remember Eric talking about the study. They did, they did quarry out there. I don't have that in this.
They did rock studies on, on the amount of rock that's there. But not environmental impact.
Alright.
Okay. Uh, next, we are closing in on the eight o'clock, so I am going to move that my, anything with my name on the, on it, I, with the exception of the Freeman agreement, I will, um, table until further meetings. So we will move to the next, which is webpage access.
I thought you said you wanted to do Freeman agreement?
Yeah. Well, it's just a signature.
Okay, are you-
That was the agreement that we didn't sign last week or two weeks ago, right?
Yeah, did you make a motion to-
Oh, we gotta make a motion to approve it.
Yeah. Commissioner Tran, when are you tabling the rock quarry to? Or you just want it in just future?
Yeah, for future, I, I'm just gonna table it indefinitely and with the, with the caveat that I, I'll bring it up in a future date if, if it's feasible.
Okay.
Okay. Is it in this packet of stuff here? There it is, yeah. Second Amendment to Emergency Department Agreement. The Second Amendment to the Emergency Department Funding Agreement is entered into on this and we have to fill in the date. By and between Bourbon County, Kansas, the city of Fort Scott and Freeman Hospital, uh, Freeman Fort Scott Hospital, Inc., a Kansas nonprofit corporation and shall amend the Emergency Department Funding Agreement entered into between county and city and Freeman on the fifth day of December 2024 Funding Agreement and First Amendment on 12th day of May 2025. Whereas the Emergency Department Agreement provides that Freeman intends to establish and operate a 24-hour, seven-day emergency department open to the public at 401 Woodland Hills Boulevard, Fort Scott, Bourbon County, Kansas. Whereas the county and city have provided substantial uh, funds to Freeman Fort Scott Hospital towards the mutual goal of opening the emergency department. Whereas the parties desire to amend the agreement to adjust the itemizing accounting period for good cause. Now therefore, in consideration of the mutual covenant contained herein, the sufficiency of which is to hereby acknowledge the parties agree to the following. Part one, uh, A, implementation funds paragraph two shall be amended and replaced with the following. Two B, Freeman shall furnish quarterly written itemized accountings to county which confirm expenditures of said funds necessary to establish and operate the aforementioned emergency department. Freeman may designate portions of said accountings as prioritor, proprietary in nature. I can't even say it.
Proprietarian.
Which caught, which, in which case said portions shall be kept confidential by county. All notices, uh, contemplated or referred in this agreement shall be given as follows. So that's what it is, is upgrading the, um, how they report. I mean, it's already been approved once before to quarterly and now they're just wanting to know that it's gonna be operating, so there might be some information that can't not be released to the public. So you wanna look at that?
I have one.
Okay.
I brought my own.
So I move that we adopt the amendments, uh, Second Amendment to the Emergency Department Funding Agreement.
Second.
Are all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Just has my signature on there. And then it'll be to the city of Fort Scott. All right, next is webpage access.
Okay. I got ahold of our webpage admin and he's our only admin across the whole webpage. Um, there are certain departments that have access. But it's to specific areas, so we need to add somebody, um, to the webpage. For act to, to be admin over the whole webpage is all, as well. Um, so, I mean, there's other things that we need to add and, and admin to, and I think that it should probably be the chairman. So I'd like to add you an access to the webpage. We also need a, another account holder, uh, for Crocan because Jennifer's the only one on there. So we need Crocan, we need the webpage. Uh, we need to add somebody to our main Verizon account because it serves multiple people in the county. Um, and Facebook, we need somebody to be full admin control on the county's Facebook page. Um, and then that one needs cleaned up and some need removed once the chairman would take the full access. And what you'll do with that is if our system goes down here like it did once before, we could just live stream those to the Facebook. It's a backup contingency plan. Um, Susan last week gave me a partial admin access, but somebody needs to be full admin access that's of the governing body.
Okay.
So are you willing to take all those? As chairman?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll do it.
Okay, so I would move that we add to Chairman Beerbauer as full admin access to Facebook, Verizon, Crocan, and the webpage for Bourbon County.
I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 What's that for?
Odd stuff.
Okay.
Okay, next up is Freeman EMS, Commissioner Milburn.
Point of order. You said eight.
Okay.
Are we gonna go past eight? It's eight ten.
I would like to because-
I'm tabling everything with my name on it, but, uh, she would like to continue.
I don't know. I just, this is-
Well, you know, we haven't had a meeting for two weeks, so this is a two-week-long meeting.
I'm just messing, yeah. So, that's good. If you guys wanna go-
I move that we continue to finish, uh, agenda items.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right, Freeman EMS. You can go.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Commissioner Milburn, you have the floor.
So you're tabling North Crawford?
I table everything, uh-
When do you want North Crawford to be?
Huh?
Since we're building an agenda as we go, when do you want North Crawford?
Uh, let's go with, I don't have my calendar in front of me, but let's go with, uh, let's go to 29th. 29th on North Crawford and Eagle Road.
On both of those?
Yeah.
So you wanna talk about them again, the 29th is what I'm hearing?
I'll, I'll bring them up.
Okay.
So right now we're on Freeman EMS.
Okay.
Freeman's the only thing we're gonna talk about for the remainder of the night, correct?
Uh, I don't, I think-
Because you got 109th Street?
No, I, I would like to cover the Freeman, um, the, the 190th. Uh, opioid was something Jennifer sent us that I think Susan said she needed to send something in.
We just need to approve it. That we want the settlement.
Okay, so I only have two things on there to talk about then.
So you got Freeman and you got 109th Street?
100, yeah, no, that was 190th Street.
190th?
Yes, that, that's, I think somebody-
You should say 190th and, or one-
Yeah, it should say 190th.
Okay. So you're gonna table everything else. When are you gonna talk about the planning commission selection?
We, we probably oughta talk about it tonight. I would hate to have to add something on to this past eight.
And is the clerk gonna talk about the agenda?
No, that was already-
We're done, okay. Alright, so we got three items on the docket right now. You got Freeman, 190th,
And planning.
Opioid settlement and planning.
Okay.
Alright.
Okay, so, um, although I've brought it up several times and several times before, there was a liaison, so not to step on Mr. Beerbauer's toes. But, um, Mercy, uh, used to run the EMS when they left. The county took it uh, because it's important to have. And now Freeman's back. And I'd been told several times in the past that they wouldn't hear a discussion about, um, managing that again. Uh, but I did go ahead and reach out to them and thought I'd take a shot in the dark and they, they are open to conversation to doing that with Bourbon County. Um, I went a little further and looked into some agreements that we have and spoke to city manager Brad and the fire chief. Um, and we have an agreement with this city. They can go out on six calls a month before charging us more when our bus is out on a call. And, um, they had that agreement when Mercy was here and they would talk about carrying that over if Freeman were to take EMS for us as well. At the beginning of the year, when I sat down with Susan, the numbers that we weren't collecting in EMS is about 300,000, but that was what we budgeted for minus what we billed for and got reimbursed for. The number is 300,000, but our benefits are not included in that budget. For some reason, the benefits for all departments are not included in their budgets, so those numbers are greater than that. I would estimate around 700,000. And I believe Mercy used to carry us, uh, we used to contribute under 300,000 to Mercy. So are you guys open to discussion with Freeman?
You're up.
First questions first. I gotta get this off my head. Is there any way we can get our budget process to include benefits back into the individual?
I would hope so. The city of Fort Scott, when they handed me the sheet for nine-on-one, they had it figured in theirs.
Right.
I don't know why. Because we can't get really real numbers of what departments spend without it. It's very difficult.
Without those numbers, I'm, 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 I don't know what I don't know. Makes sense? So I would like moving forward. I would like to have, we don't have to discuss it tonight, but I mean, since you brought it up. Um, what is your, what is ultimately your end goal of having EMS moved over to Freeman?
Well, it would take a financial burden from the county. And I think that's what we're trying to do here is if services can be, be provided elsewhere and our, uh, residents of our county would not suffer otherwise and we could save the county money, at the same time, isn't that our goal here at this table?
Okay, um, what happens if, what happens if Freeman goes belly up?
Well, the same thing that happened when Mercy left, we would take it back.
And when that happened, and I wasn't here, and please don't take it personally, I'm just asking because I need to be educated. So was that a painless endeavor or was it pretty painful to start from scratch?
Nothing's painless.
So it would be painful?
Everything here is painful.
I know. I know. Does it have to be done now?
I, I am just asking to continue to have conversations with Freeman and be open to the dialogue, this commission.
So the ask that you're looking at me, we're looking, the ask here is for you to be able to go and talk to the city,
Well, I can talk. I'm asking you guys to sit down and listen to what they have to say if they can save our county money by taking something.
Well, Commissioner Milburn, that's, that's an easy answer for me. I will listen to anybody.
Okay.
I, I may not agree with you, but I will listen to you. So, yeah, if this ask is about a communication, fact-finding, I'm all for it, okay? But I need-
Because there's no use in me pursuing if commissioners aren't on board.
Sure.
And I don't know why commissioners wouldn't be on board if it stands to not lose any services for the residents of our county and save the residents of our county money.
Okay. My turn. You guys.
I'm just, yeah, I'm just, I'm gonna do the same thing you said to me, is I'm gonna listen, okay?
Okay. So, and regarding this issue, we, I already had a discussion regarding the liaison and the stepping, uh, over the, over that. But, uh, so regarding the issue over control of EMS to Freeman, um, I am not for this and there are several reasons. First, and it, Commissioner Tran did, uh, elaborate on that a little bit. Um, Fort Scott Freeman, or Freeman Fort Scott just opened last week. So to have this discussion is kind of premature, uh, to, they got a lot on their plate that they're gonna have to, uh, take care of before, um, they, they, you know, that we should even have this discussion. Um, the opening of the hospital is a great achievement for this county and, uh, I do remember when Mercy left and I do understand how, how the pains that it took for this community and, and- and, and for, when the county took over, the EMS has been the one bright and shining star of all this. I mean, in the last year, we didn't even have an ER, and they're the ones that stepped up, and I imagine you could fill this room with people that would come in here and say that if it hadn't been for Bourbon County EMS, they wouldn't be sitting here today, or wouldn't be able to talk here today.
I know you have more to say, but may I?
Let me finish, let me finish. Secondly, EMS is not a burden, they're not even a tax levy-funded department. So, you know, and they're getting ready to get more income because of the increase in transfers on downstreaming from Freeman. So, I mean, I think we hold off and wait and see how the numbers are, uh, you know, how, how the numbers are in, you know, another year, uh, rather than jump the gun now and start doing something that, like, again, we don't have crystal balls, we don't know how this is gonna ha, how this is gonna pan out, and right now, they're in our corner, you know, they're, they're in our umbrella, and if something bad happens and we don't have the hospital tomorrow, we still got an EMS that can get people to where they need to go. And, uh, I think having to start all over again, uh, when we don't have to is, is, is a mistake. That's my, my opinion.
Okay.
So, back to you.
So, I believe that, that you're vilifying what I'm trying to do. I'm trying to save the county money, and I'm not trying to take away services from the county. So, there...
But I think we're rushing it, I think we're rushing it. Because, I mean, they're, they're, they're only in here, they've only been here for a week, not even a week, and we're, we're ready to hand over our EMS that we've, that's been built up by employees in, in this county for two years, three years now? Four years since Mercy left? Five years? I can't remember how long it's been since they left.
Two thousand nineteen. So, so what is bad about Freeman, just like Mercy operating EMS? What would be wrong with Freeman operating EMS?
I'm not saying that it's wrong, I'm saying it's premature. I'm saying that we're rushing into it without Freeman being established here as a hospital.
Okay, well, discussions take a while, and if you... How long, how long until you're satisfied that they're established, that we could talk to them?
Oh, I think, I, I would say that this is probably a subject that would be better for five commissioners than three, because we're not that far out from that, from that part.
And I imagine that it'll spill over to five, the discussion would.
I'm just saying that, if we're gonna look at it, that's three months down, or, or four months down the road, and when we would have a five-commission board, and then if, then we wanted to, to breach this subject and...
So you're asking me to stop? Don't information gather? Don't find out what it's gonna, don't find out what it costs us? Don't find out anything, just stop because of why?
You've already crossed the line, it should've been, you know, you bringing it to the table and handing it over to me.
I am bringing it to the table.
As the liaison and me making these contacts. I mean, that's how the liaison system was supposed to work.
Oh, I'm sorry, did, did, diligent, didn't you call and find out stuff to bring to the table?
And I brought it to you.
Okay.
And I brought to, to Zoom to you.
So maybe the liaison don't work, because I'm not gonna sink in the sand, I'm gonna roll, I'm gonna keep moving.
Even if this board says not to?
So you don't want to have any discussion about how to save the county money?
I'm just telling you, I mean, I think you're putting an all... I think you're putting an ultimatum on, to this board, that either we allow you to go forward with this, or we don't.
But you don't want me to do anything?
I want the board to make a vote on this, and if, if the board...
Why would you vote about discussing something? Why wouldn't you discuss something, see if it's a viable option, and then vote if it was a viable option? Who says it is? Why be offended about talking about something?
Well, I'll start off with in the manner that, that it got presented to me. I mean, I go to EMS to do a tour, and the first thing that I hear from employees there that are worried and scared, that a commissioner walked in and told them that they were no longer gonna be operational here, or called.
Operational, okay, well, that's not true.
That they were gonna be farmed out to somebody else.
Well, that's not how that was said either, so if that's how it was displayed to you, and that's incorrect.
I said exactly what you said, that there's gonna be talks with Freeman about you handing EMS over to Freeman.
That's exactly right, talks with Freeman. So what you're saying is not what I said.
Which I don't think...
And also, you were sent an email, and I will read it. Um, I sent it to Bob, Bob sent it to everybody. "Bob, the commission is aware of Freeman's opening, and now I would like to start discussion on the possibility of Freeman taking back EMS. EMS was a function of Mercy Hospital before Mercy left our community. The county of Bourbon took EMS to fill the gap when Mercy left, now Freeman has filled that gap. Mercy left, and Freeman is open to conversation about the management of EMS in our county."
And...
And so that's, that, I mean, I don't know if I'll send that to you or not, but that's...
I received a copy of that email after you've already talked to Freeman, after you already talked to the city manager, after you already talked to the fire chief, and also made a phone call to the EMS director.
Just talk to them today, actually.
Right. And that email went out, but when did you talk to Freeman? When did you make the phone call to EMS?
I believe my secretary Friday, why I said this.
Is that, is that, if, if we're honoring the, the liaison process that Dr. Cohen brought into this, then you should've never made the comment to begin with until you came to this board and said, "Hey, I want permission, or I want the liaison to make contact with Freeman and, and move this forward," but you didn't.
So you want me to ask for permission to find ways to save this county money?
I want you not to step on somebody else's toes doing it.
Well, I'm sorry that I hurt your toes, but...
Yeah, I, I mean, point of, you know, the, the point is, is this, is that, uh, you, you brought it to the table, I voiced my opinion, I'm not for it, I think it's too premature, that they're not been here long enough, so...
So you don't want in any of the discussions, if we have discussions? Commissioner Tran has agreed to set in discussions, you are gonna exclude yourself?
I don't know. I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm saying that you shouldn't be continuing the discussion with Freeman on this, but... Make your motion.
May I?
I don't have a motion.
May I? I think everybody needs to step back from the table for a little bit, just take a deep breath. I know, I, I understand what you're trying to do, I also understand you, okay? You guys are very passionate about what you do, and I appreciate that, I appreciate being part of this team, but we gotta stay a team, you can't go down this road. I think it is premature, I do. But I also know Commissioner Milburn, I've watched you, and it's like, you are gonna do what you think is best for the county, and you're gonna push ahead and do it. I also know Commissioner Birbauer. I understand where he's coming from. I think, right now, with everything that's happening in Freeman, I think they're gonna talk to you, I think they're gonna, I think they're gonna do the magnanimous thing, which is to talk to a commissioner. They're not gonna sit there and say, "Well, I wanna talk to you," I mean, they just opened up. You are a sitting commissioner, they are gonna talk to you. So I think that's part, I think that's part of it. But I also think that Freeman has bid off a lot more than they're letting on in terms of monetary, okay? They, 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 they bent over backwards to come in here, and I think they put a lot of money into the hospitals, so what I'm saying is, let's just take that wait-and-see attitude. Do I think that you can talk? Sure, talk is, talk is talk, okay? So I understand that point, but I also understand where, where Commissioner Birbauer's come across, like, you just gotta give a little bit of time. So, if I may just suggest, do what you think you need to do, but don't be in such a hurry to change things just yet.
I don't think that I'm in a hurry, I think I mentioned this, been mentioning it for months, actually. So, I mean, that's not a rush to me.
With all due respect, ma'am, this is the first I've heard, and I've been here two months, so I, I'm not doubting what you said, I just, I have not heard...
Like I told Dr. Cohen when he asked me, if anybody paid attention, I mean, you could find it on the videos. I've mentioned it several times.
Sure.
And Susan had mentioned it to me when I had first started, so...
Are you guys...
I'm, I'm good, I'm good, sir.
You're discussing?
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay, um, public and dare?
If you don't already know, you're gonna learn pretty quick, I'm all about procedures, and I don't understand, I, I, you said, stated that one of your, one of the goals of a commissioner, or job of a commission, is to find savings for taxpayers and, and all of that kind of thing. But I think one of the, uh, goals also should be, how do we treat one another? How do we speak to one another? How do we, I mean, you're leaders in that as well. And if there are liaisons that took on responsibilities to be liaisons, starting next meeting, let's get back to the liaison responsibilities you were given to begin with. Because it is very confusing for me to sit here and look, and I know some of the liaison responsibilities, I don't know them all, but I know some of them, and I see names all over the place. Talking to people and, and, and taking, maybe, maybe, oh, I don't know, overstepping, I don't know. But I really wanna see a little bit more, you guys have, have, have worked hard at being patient, at putting things to the next meeting, at, uh, doing a better effort to, to really research some things and that kind of thing. But, um, you agreed to some liaison positions, and for the benefit of the community, I would really like for you to get back to those responsibilities. And if you have a question, if you want Sam to go talk to, um, Public Works then at a meeting, uh, you ask him your concerns, you ask him whatever, so that he can fulfill his job duties. I thought, I, I mean, I don't know what happened in the executive session, but, uh, the ask was, the motion was earlier in the meeting, that he be given permission to talk to Dr. Cohen. That is an, an appropriate way to handle those types of things. So, um, that's it, I'm sorry, that's, that's it, I'm good.
Thank you. Mr. Motley?
So, um, I spoke to Freeman about this issue, they're, they're being polite in talking with you. Uh, they have no, they really don't have any interest in it at all right now, but they were gonna take a call from a commissioner and politely talk to them. They, to Sam's point, they are sinking big money into this project. And Mercy and Freeman are not apples-to-apples, Mercy had that whole building. Uh, Freeman has about one-quarter of the building, and so they have far fewer managers there, they really only have one manager there, and they're up to their eyeballs in policies and procedures. So, um, I think that, that the correct timing of this discussion should be when they get their survey done and they're approved by Medicare, Medicaid, and their, and private insurance, when they can start having some decent cash flow, I think that's the, the right timing for this, so, just my opinion.
Thanks, sir.
Anybody else? Terry?
So, are we gonna go back to all of these cards?
On the, on the agenda items, it's by hand. Yeah, it's no card. Because they don't know when they're gonna wanna speak during an, an agenda item until we've had our discussion.
We just need to make up our mind and not be wishy-washy.
Okay, well, I haven't been. Go ahead.
My question is, where has EMS cost the county money outside of what you subsidize? We're very self-sufficient, very self-supporting. Last year alone, I saved the county a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars in grants. So I'm not seeing where we are costing outside of what you subsidize by state statute. You're gonna have to subsidize anybody, whether the county has us or Freeman has us.
And what was it when it was, what, what are we subsidizing you right now?
I think last year was two hundred and twelve thousand dollars.
And, and that's about what we subsidized Mercy when they had it, right?
You subsidized Mercy almost three hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
And are the benefits included in that? In those numbers?
I don't, I don't know.
I don't.
They weren't when I spoke to the clerk when I first started. She went over these numbers with me, and that's where I got them.
I have to pull the information to get you so accurate.
But, but as David said, our, our revenue is going to be increasing because of transfers. I mean, we've already taken, I mean, they've been open since Thursday morning at nine, and we've already been to Joplin three times.
This wasn't intended to be an offensive discussion, it seems like there's a lot of people here offended. I'm not exactly sure why. I think this, you know, under Mercy, um, it was EMS, and it was here in this community. Under Bourbon County, it was EMS, and it was here in this community, and I don't see why it would be any different under Freeman. I don't know why the conversation's offensive, I don't know why everybody's so abrasive about the conversation.
Thank you.
Do you want me to answer that?
Uh, yeah, sure.
Change, change without a clear vision scares people. And when it comes out of left field and people are not sure what's happening, they get scared. It's not that they're being defensive, they're be, they're scared, okay? There's a lot that has gone on in this room in the last two months, a lot of stuff. And I'm speaking for me, and I'm not, I'm not speaking to you as commissioner, I'm speaking to you as, as a fellow human being, fellow citizen. You're very, very good with what you do, and keep it up, but they need, we need to slow down a little bit.
So...
What, what I mean is, don't slow down what you're doing, slow down on how we do things, it's like, and not everything has to be done immediately or, or whatever. We can start a conversation, it should've started with a conversation at the table.
And it did. Like I said, I've mentioned it at the table for several meetings. I'm sorry that everybody failed to pay attention, but it did start as a conversation at the table, several meetings. I can probably go back and find three timestamps for you where I've mentioned this, okay? So it's, it's really, it shouldn't be surprising, if it's surprising, then somebody wasn't paying attention.
Any, at any of those...
And I'll hold on, please. So, the, once the Freeman was up and running, I surveyed a lot of people. I surveyed a lot of people for a lot of things. And so once they were up and running, I just thought, you, you know what? Actually, I think I've asked Greg at the table, and he said they weren't interested. And then I just thought, well, it's worth a try, let's just ask him, they're up and running. And so I asked him, and they said, "Sure, we'd be up in a conversation," and I know Greg said they were just being nice, but there's no reason for that. If you, if you are open to taking it, um, then, then you say, "Sure, let's have a conversation." If you can't sustain it, you say, "No, I don't think we can sustain that." So there, there's no reason to be dishonest, which is, I guess, what Greg's saying they were doing.
No, I don't think Greg is saying that, I think Greg was saying that they're being magnanimous. That's what he's trying to say.
Well, I mean, there's, if, if you can't do it, then there's no reason wasting anybody's time, but they didn't say that, so they're gonna have to back that off, or, you know.
Okay.
So...
Well, I mean, I'm waiting.
Go ahead, please, please, just...
Um, so again, this, this isn't to be vilified, you know? This is not to, to poke at anybody or anything, but it's just to explore options. And if we didn't have the conversation like this at the table, and then everything was wrapped up and it was brought to the table to vote on, well then, I guess people would say, "Well, you're not being transparent." So, pick one, folks, which way do, which way shall we operate? So, okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, uh, I'm gonna, you two were having a conversation back and forth, that's why I thought I could chime in. Uh, however, you said at least three times you've mentioned this at the table, and any of those three times was you, uh, approved by the, the board to speak on our behalf and go have these conversations? To go have these conversations, or, or to, or to say that...
Nobody's speaking on your behalf at all, nobody's speaking on behalf of the board, I will not accept that comment, not even for a moment.
You're gonna let me finish, you're gonna let me finish, 'cause I let you finish.
No, you said something that was untrue about me, and I will not accept it.
And what I'm saying is, in those three conversations that you said you brought this to the board, that at the, any time did that board say, "Go ahead, Commissioner Milburn, go ahead and do the research, go ahead to make contact with Freeman?"
So you want me to ask this board to do any research about anything?
Did, did any of those times happen before or after the liaison? I mean, you would have to have done it entirely before the liaison process was done, you would've had to have had these conversations with this board.
I'm sorry, I didn't know the liaison was gonna cut my Achilles' toe, I couldn't do any... do anything, or I wouldn't have agreed to it.
So, yeah, I mean, the free-for-all, and just, you know, what happens if I would have went to Freeman?
Mr. Bearbauer, you went to Diligent, you went to Mr. Briers, you went to several things.
They contacted me, I didn't contact them.
Okay, well, I'm not going to hang up on the calls.
And I brought them to you at this table.
I'm not going to hang up on anybody. I'm not going to stop doing work for this county.
Did you hang, did they hang up on, did they call you? They called you?
Freeman? No, I reached out to Freeman.
Right. No, but we're just going to keep going around and around, and the bottom, the bottom line is, is this, is that we have a liaison process that you overstepped, and you're going to try to justify it, that you had brought this up in conversations with this board before.
Okay, well, I don't accept that, because everybody oversteps on these liaison things, and I'm not seeing it the same way you are.
As far as I'm concerned, we're done, so.
Are we going to cover opioid, 190th, the planning commission, or your documents?
190th is yours.
So, the 190th, I had a taxpayer reach out, and they wanted to talk about a private road, and I believe he was in your district, Mr. Bearbauer, but I didn't turn him down. I went ahead and had the conversation, and I believe it was under Mr. Trans liaison position, but I also still, again, did not turn him down. So, if that's overstepping, then I guess I overstep. So, it, it was a citizen, and he reached out and, and asked if we could explore the possibility of creating a benefit district for the purpose of redoing and res servicing a private neighborhood road. He went ahead and got the length, it's approximately 1,156 foot by 10 to 11 feet. There's 10, there's four houses in the neighborhood. They're willing to pay for the road through a tenure agreement with the county. So, they're not asking for a handout, they're asking to create a benefit district. And I also went ahead and spoke to Bob about it, and he's looking into what it would take to create a benefit district, if the commission were interested in doing that for that group of citizens. There's also empty lots in there that could, I don't know if they're, they're wanting to get rid of them right now, but, you know, possibility from, from warehouses in the future.
That's on, that's on the west side of, are you talking about the lake? Or is it north of that?
It's, it's actually just right across from the lake.
Oh.
So, did it go north?
Yeah.
The road?
It goes north.
Okay. Okay. I'm trying to get my, my picture on it.
John Horn and David Lipe.
Okay.
That's correct.
Okay.
It's a single lane road right now. So, you meet somebody, you have to pull off the code.
I don't see it on, on, on the map.
Don't them guys all run around in golf carts anyway?
It's a private drive.
Just a second, Mr. Smith.
So, like I said, they're willing to pay for it. They just want the consideration of the county.
And Bob's looking into it.
What it would take to create a benefit district.
Okay. I have no opposition to that.
Okay, I'm looking at it. There's one, two, three, there's three houses down this road.
Four.
Yes, you're correct. You are correct, four. So, if we do this, it's only the road, not the driveway.
That's right, just the road that serves all four homes.
It's like a cul-de-sac, isn't it?
Well...
Similar?
Here it is, right here.
Yeah. I knew, when he said Mr. Lipe, I knew who he was talking about.
Is that the one directly across from Oakwood? It goes up?
Yeah.
You just pave it off through to my house, it'd be great.
Yeah, but you had to go through the marsh and across the river and all that stuff.
You had to become commissioner first.
I mean, and then maybe, maybe. Wow, okay, so what's your ask, ma'am?
I'm, I'm just, again, just like I'm, I thought I was supposed to do, bringing information to the table.
Okay, so you, you, you've engaged Bob on the matter?
That's right.
And right now, it's in Bob's lane?
That's right.
Okay, so, we can just table this till Bob comes back to us?
Sure. About the benefit district?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
That's fine, I have no opposition to it. Last thing is the opioid?
Two things, opioid and the planning commission.
Okay, yeah, opioid. I move that we allow the clerk to do the necessary computer application to get the opioid settlement. Isn't that what we're doing? Yeah.
What are, what are we going to do with the money when we, when it is settled?
It has to go into that specific...
It goes into that fund until something that, that, by description of that statute, can, you know, like we had earlier in this year, we had a, a young lady approach with the, with a group that does...
The vehicle.
Yeah, well, yeah. So, their rehab.
All right.
Yeah.
And so, we're not going to spend that money on anything other than for opioids?
What its intended purposes are for.
Okay. I had a constituent call me right before the meeting, was very concerned about that, so...
Okay. All right. I made a motion.
Oh, a second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 And on that Lake, Lakeview, we're going to table it, but I want to give a date to September 29.
Okay.
I don't know, you need to check with Bob.
Okay, so, next item, Planning Commission selection process. Are we ready to make our, you know, by the, the resolution, we were each to have two, and then we would vote on a seventh. So, do you have your two people, or do we need to set this up for a future meeting to, to do that?
Did anybody give us a list of people in our district?
No, it was, by sta, by the, the resolution, we were to seek our own non-members.
Right, but where the lines are and who's in what district?
No, I, I don't, I don't...
So, you're just certain that whoever you're picking is in your district?
Well, I have, yeah, the two I have are definitely in my district, so...
And you're certain that yours are too? Then...
But if you're, if, if we want to table it, we can table it. I mean, there's no, you know, unless you have people in mind already.
Nope, I got to check districts.
Huh?
I have to check districts.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I don't know, how's that work? Do you do District Three, or are you going to do District Five? On this, it would be District Three.
They didn't separate that resolution into districts, and so, it's old District Three.
Okay. All right, so...
So, yeah, right now, you're going to execute based upon the old district. Now, come January, you're probably going to have to revamp it to include the new districts.
Um, yeah, I'm not sure how we'll, we'll proceed with that. We may have to include at up to an 11-man, 11-person deal, and allow them to, to pick theirs as well. It's a seven-member board now. We may have, we'll just have to review the resolution at that time, so...
So, we're tabling that till when?
Till, let's go, well, we have to, this need, I mean, for me, this needs to move, I'd say next week. Yeah. And is that it?
So, the only thing we got, okay, so to, to wrap up what, I, I, sorry, my apologies, I don't mean to hijack. So, based upon what we talked about beginning the meeting, the only thing we have on the agenda for next week is going to be Planning Commission selection process.
And three, well, yeah, because we moved other things to other dates.
Right. Everything, those three other things...
And then we have a public hearing...
Okay.
For budget.
Budget. So, I think that's enough.
Yes. I do believe that would be plenty.
I was going to bring a 108 West Second Street discussion. I think that you still need to talk about that fence viewing with Ms. Johnson. You already said that you wanted to bring Mapleton Road back. I'd like to talk about the valuation, the mid-year valuation with the appraiser. I'd love to talk about...
I'm cool with it. Can you start again from the beginning, so I can write down the notes?
Ah, yes. 108, 108 West Second.
108 West Second?
Yep. We need to do something with the fence viewing that's on the list.
And who's dis, I mean, that's all three of us, it's not just me.
Okay.
You know...
But we need to discuss.
My eyes are bad, so I can't view fences very well.
Going there. You guys, I believe...
Didn't we reach out to the parties on both of them?
No, you need to set a fence viewing date.
Yeah. So, we need to set a date so she can notify the, the participating landowners.
Let's go, I'll bring you hot dogs.
Shouldn't you reach out to the landowners and ask them when they could, if a date works?
I think they do that at our, at our schedule. I mean, I think it says in there that you send out a letter to both parties saying that you're going to fence view on this date. That's how the statute applies it to. And...
So, are we just setting a date right now?
Let's do that. He said Saturday.
Yep. I'm open every Saturday and Sunday. How fast does Snail Mill leave here, ma'am clerk?
Um, I can, I can...
Three and a half days?
Yeah, and tomorrow, I have hearings all day for cemeteries and townships, so I wouldn't be able to get out tomorrow.
Okay. So, this weekend would be off?
And I, I'll have to attend those.
Well, well...
You have to attend those two?
Yeah, because it's a meeting.
Oh, because it's a meeting, that's right.
Let's, let's shoot for October 4th.
Um...
I have to, I might be...
Can we do like the 20th or 21st?
Of this month?
Yeah, the 20th.
What about, would that be enough time, the 20th?
The 20th, yeah.
To get the, I'm asking.
Oh, sorry.
I had a court, I'm sorry.
October 20th, I'm not available.
No, no, September 20th.
That's what I meant, September 20th, I'm not available.
What about the 21st?
I could be available the 21st, if you'd allow me to go to church, please.
Hang on.
So, we could do it before church, 7:00 AM?
Hang on, I may not be able to do that one, guys.
Are you available the 27th? For next weekend?
Yes.
What about Saturday, the 27th?
The 21st I could do. It's the 28th that I can't.
Okay, so we want to, you okay with the 21st?
7:00 AM?
I don't care. She's going to go to church.
I go to church out of town, so I would prefer an afternoon.
What time, ma'am?
What time's the Chiefs play?
I could do 1:00. I could probably do 11:00. I could get home by 11:00.
Okay, so let's do...
9:21?
Afternoon, 1:00, 2:00?
I'd rather whatever day we can do it really early.
Saturday, the 27th, can you do it at 7:00 AM?
Yes.
Wait, when, when?
Saturday, the 27th.
That's a, that week I can't do.
You can't do?
That weekend I cannot do.
Okay. I'm scratching here.
All right. Let's switch gears. Weekday, what's a good weekday? But it's got to be early, like 6:00 in the morning.
6:00 AM, got it. Any day.
That's, that's about it, I mean...
Give a date.
Any weekday works for me, but it's got to be, like, early.
Wednesdays or Fridays?
Where's the place at? We can't talk about...
What time is dawn?
Wednesday, Thursday, or Friday?
Just making sure we're not pushing dawn.
Let's go Friday. The 12th? No, we can't get, we can't do that, so it'd be in the 19th.
Are you here on the 19th?
Yes.
19th, 6:00 AM.
Okay.
Friday, the 19th, at 6:00 AM. Is it daylight?
Is that before dawn?
Yes.
I get up every morning and take my dog for a cruise.
Okay.
And, and at 6:30, it's still dark.
So, I need to...
It's light or below.
About 7:00.
I was wondering that.
About 7:00. How about 7:00?
All right, 7:00 it is. Who's bringing coffee and donuts?
I bring coffee. If you drink it black. I don't make any mixtures.
That's how I drink it.
Yeah.
You don't have creamers and foo-foo stuff downrange.
All right, so, what else we got to put on next?
19, 19 September, okay.
So, fence viewing's been changed. 108 West Second is on next agenda.
What else you got?
Planning Commission and public hearing for budget. What else?
Um, you want Mapleton Road?
I think that you guys had that on there. That's what I wrote down.
Yeah, that was already there.
So, the valuation of the mid-year, mid-year valuation by the appraiser, I wanted to start a credit card discussion and public hearing.
Okay, so credit card...
I think you said public hearing, yeah.
Credit card discussion.
Mm-hmm.
And you said what?
The mid-year valuation by the appraiser.
Okay.
And then you guys had Mapleton Road, 108 West Second.
That should be enough, because, I don't know, the public hearing's probably going to take a while.
Yeah, I think we're going to get in there.
Yeah.
It'll be 100 people.
I believe it. I believe it.
Laura Holdridge, you're to an executive session next week.
Okay.
Let's go ahead, because this seems to be quite the endeavor itself, and put building of the agenda on the agenda. I mean...
Say it again. Build the agenda?
Building of the agenda, what we're doing right now, right before Commissioner comments.
Oh.
I'll put that as a topic.
Okay. So, now, are we ready to move to Commissioner comments?
Let me run through these ones one by one.
So, we got eight items on the agenda for next, and we have budget. Shall I call you this week?
Not tomorrow.
Not tomorrow?
I have a meeting on that schedule.
All right, I'll call you later on this week then. Or you can call me. Thank you.
It was like Monday.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Very much concerned.
Um, the, she still has asylum during red, the red folder.
Thank you.
All right. Are we, are we good, ma'am?
Were you doing anything with Diligent?
Uh, no.
No.
I will contact them and say we are not interested. Because we're gonna pursue less expensive avenues.
Wouldn't have to start docking the councilor's pay. Wouldn't have to start docking the councilor's pay.
Or you left a cut?
That's second or third time. Smile, man, smile.
No, I never smile.
It could, oh, that's, that's a lie, I've seen you smiling before. Could be worse.
Could be. Could drive a Toyota.
Don't knock it, bud, I got a Ford too, I've had Chevys.
I had a Toyota, I'm just giving you a hard time.
I know that, I'm pretty sure your wife's the smart one in the family, she makes you buy a Toyota.
She's definitely the smart one in the family. She told me not to take this job.
It's not that bad, buddy. You're doing the people's work. I have a curfew, Commissioner Milburn.
Sorry. I'm just trying to make sure that we got everything on this building agenda.
No, sir, I have no comments.
I have no comments.
You have comments?
I do not. Diehards right there.
Exactly, these are the diehards.
Did we put the planning commission on here?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I didn't have that on there. Okay.
Commissioner comment.
Thank you. So although I do believe this commission still has work to do, I think it's relevant and necessary for me to say thank you to my fellow commissioners, Sam and David. Um, thank you for what you're doing for our county. I believe this commission is putting in the work and when you put in the work, things tend to work out. Bourbon County is experiencing much each of us believe to be necessary changes and these changes are not without extensive thought. So with that, citizens of Bourbon County and commissioners of Bourbon County, thank you.
Thank you.
Hey.
I move that we adjourn the meeting.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Did you say aye?
I did. Hey, thank you. Thank you for all you do. Do you understand that? All right, if it's not personal, it's not, I think the world of you.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, you too. Susan, how was your vacation?
It was outstanding.
Good, I'm glad, yes. I heard you talked about snakes, did you ever see one there?
No, goodness, because we were in a lot of rap, although our car broke down.
Oh, no!
On a really busy interstate.
No, where were you, where did you go?
We went to Washington State, so we went up South Dakota, Montana, you know all about Idaho.
What part of Washington did you go to?
Spokane.
Oh, yeah, that's a nice place.
Yeah, his uncle owns about 50 acres on top of the hill that overlooks Lake Roosevelt, so it was beautiful. But there was a bunch of forest fires, so it was real smoky.
Forests, and it was flying down there too, so.
Yeah, yeah, but it was, it was a very good trip.
Well, that's good, I'm glad, except for breaking down, that's not good.
Yeah, yeah, no, we called the sheriff and he blocked the lane so we could.
They do that in that area, yes. When you break down, they get out.
We had one in Wa, in, um, actually, that was in, even in Alabama, I think, that we broke down. He actually stood out in the middle of the road. Yeah, just, he, he, well, when they're going ninety.
I know!
It's kinda scary.
I know!
He couldn't pull over in like grass, because of the rattlesnakes.
Right, right.
Um, but yeah, I was, we didn't.
We didn't spend much time in that area, but we were in Washington State for four years in the army and we was over at, uh, Seattle area, Fort.
Yeah.
Fort Lewis. Um, that, yeah, we were there when the mountain happened, we could see it from our apartment.
Well, they had, when we left, there was about 500 acres that were burning and it's up to 3,500 acres now.
Right.
So it was. It was moving.
It was moving fast.
Yeah, it was, that's pretty scary.
Yeah, it is. Well, I'm glad you had snakes with you.
We did, we saw lots, yeah, that's good. His uncle has Parkinson's and he's been injured, so probably not many.